Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for August 8, 2019. Just for a change, we're going to start on time today. The first thing we should do is turn your cellphone off. And if you have an item on the agenda that you want to be heard concerning, you'll find some forms like this on the table out in the vest of yule. If you'll fill one out for us, that will help us a bunch to keep everything sort of orderly and for our record-keeping and so forth. The way this works, for those of you who don't come down here every other Thursday, we have a little bit of housekeeping here at the beginning that we'll take care of. When we get to the items to be heard individually, we will ask the applicant to come forward, give us their name and address, tell us what it is they're here seeking. We may have questions of that individual. There may be some discussion amongst commissioners. If there's anyone who wants to be heard on that item, either for or against it, we'll ask them likewise to come forward, give us their name and address, and share their thoughts, questions, or concerns. There may be questions of that person, there may be more discussion. At some point, we'll call for a vote on each item in turn. The first thing on the agenda is receipt of the minutes from the -- I have to look because we only meet occasionally in the summertime, July 11, 2019, meeting of the Planning Commission.
I move a motion and a second to receive the minutes of the July 11 Planning Commission
meeting. Do you cast your votes, please? They are received. We have a few continuance requests.
We have eight uncontested continuances. 4B 26 CE 996 is deferred to August or will be deferred to August 22. 4B 27 SPUD 1127 would be deferred to September 12. 4B 28 SPUD 1135 would be deferred to September 12 as well, as would be 4B 29 SPUD 1137. 4B 30 SPUD 1140 would be deferred to September 26. 4B 31 CE 7089 deferred to September 26. 4B 32 CE 979 deferred to October 10. And 4B 33 SPUD 1117 deferred to November 14.
Is there anybody here today that thought that they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion. I have a motion and a second to continue items 26 through 33. Do you cast your votes, please? Those items are continued to the date read. Are there any new requests for continuance? If not, we'll move on to public hearings. The first item under public hearings is a consent agenda. There are a few items on the agenda that are relatively routine, for which there's been no protest, things that are just sort of a little bit above administrative, and so we vote on them together as a block rather than individually. Could you read those for us, please?
Yes, we have five items on the consent docket. The first is CE 1001, application to close a portion of the right-of-way on North Walnut Avenue. The second is EC 10597, application to rezone 11301 Southeast 89th Street from AA to RA2. The third is a final plat of Crystal Hill Estates, Section 3. Number four is a final plat of the Vintages at Camden Park, Section 2. And number five is a final plat of Native Plains, Section 3.
Is there anybody here today that thought they wanted to be heard on any of those items? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of items 1 through 5 on the consent docket.
I have a motion and a second to approve items 1 through 5. Would you cast your votes, please? They are approved. Items requiring separate vote.
First item is PC 10598, application by CSW Investor LLC to rezone 1206 Southeast 15th Street from C3 Community Commercial District to the I1 Light Industrial District.
Is the applicant present?
Madam Chairperson, Commissioners, my name is Rod Baker with Baker First Commercial Real Estate, and I represent the CSW Investors on this application. We're seeking to rezone this to I1 to more accurately reflect what is now going on on the property plus redevelopment of the property. The plan is there is to build a new building for Fleet Pride, which is a tenant of the current building that's on the property. And they have a retail component plus some warehousing component on the property, and then possibly to have one other building on the property as well. And so we'd be building a new building approximately 12,000 to 13,000 square feet, actually directly behind the existing building, and tearing down the existing facility or most of it at any rate. So in looking at the way it's being used now and the way in the proposed use, we felt like this was a more appropriate use of this, or zoning application anyway.
Commissioners, do we have any questions or applicants?
I have a couple quick questions. I saw a few comments in our staff report that didn't make it as TEs, but I think make sense as TEs potentially. There was one on the requirement for sidewalks.
Okay.
I didn't admittedly make it past the site.
Okay.
I don't know if it currently has.
There's not a sidewalk there right now, no.
Do you guys plan to build new sidewalks?
If that's the requirement of the development, sure.
I'd love to see them. So if you'd commit to them, I'd be thrilled about that. The other -- one of the questions I was going to ask is, you know, what you guys plan to do to the existing building or if you were building new? It sounds like you are. One of the other comments here that I also agree with is that site design should include buildings with windows and building storefronts that face Southeast 15. Is that the plan with the new buildings?
That's the plan. And we don't have a final design on the building yet.
Well, and I don't even need to see it because, as we all know, we don't really control that, but I'd love to just.
But they do want good visibility. As I said, it's a -- the primary building on there is a retail facility on the front with some warehousing component in the back for the flow of distribution of goods. So they want a nice storefront on the front of the building, the glass and some masonry and all.
It's a truck accessory sale place, right?
That's correct.
For semi-trucks? Or for all trucks?
They sell all kinds of different truckers.
I'm just curious at what kind of semi-traffic is coming through at any given time.
They have some. Seems to be more trailers and that kind of thing, smaller trucks. They don't -- the larger trucks are mostly delivery trucks that come in, but I mean, there's a few larger ones, but.
In your new part down here, are you making it more convenient for semis to get in and out? I guess is where I'm going with this.
Semis would be the trucks that are bringing in all the parts for.
But not shopping there. I mean, the semi-drivers that pull over to get new lights, new -- that's not.
That's not the -- I'm not saying you'd never have one in there, but it's not the predominant use of it.
I've seen the place. I just wasn't real sure what kind of retail went on there. I was just making sure that at some point in time, there weren't going to be 25 semis blocking the intersection, I guess, trying to get in and out of there.
Right.
Staff, I guess, can you give me some idea of the comparison of signage that would be permitted on the C3 versus I1?
Size and height is virtually the same.
Do we need to go -- so do we need to go and include the sidewalks? I guess we can include that as our own additional TE.
Well, you can't make them do that because this is a straight zoning.
Straight zoning, okay.
He could agree to do that if he wants to, but I don't think that would be enforceable.
Gotcha. And that.
Well, you've agreed to do it, correct?
Get that on the record.
Which I think is great, so I'm glad Aso mentioned that. I move approval of item 6.
Did we need to hear from anybody?
I had asked if there was anybody here who wanted to be heard. Didn't I? Didn't I ask that? Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? Apparently not.
Second.
So I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 6. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 7 is PUD 1727, application by Redstone Ranch Villas to rezone 11435 Northwest 98th Street from R1 Single Family to PUD 1727.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant. This is an application for a 28-acre PUD that lies within the Redstone Ranch Development. The Redstone Ranch Development is a 320-acre residential development that lies on the north side of Britton in between P-Mart Road and Mustang Road. I believe that it was in 2006, 2007 that the entirety of this 320 acres was rezoned to straight R1 Single Family. Our client actually contracted the property in 2016, at which time we proceeded on with getting the approved preliminary plat that is the current and active plat today. And that plat is 320 acres that is designed to meet the straight R1 Single Family, the entirety of the project. Since we closed on the project, we have built three phases that are predominantly on the east side next to Mustang Road. We have the fourth phase that's under construction right now. And given the overall size, 320 acres of this project and the current market conditions, our client would like to integrate a couple different product types into this development. And so that's the purpose of the PUD that's before you today. As far as the specifics of the PUD, we are proposing two tracts. You'll notice that on the north, and generally it's in the middle of our addition or project on the north end, but track 1 is about 22 and 1/2 acres. We are proposing that it be developed under the R1 guidelines with a minimum lot size of 5,400 square feet and a minimum lot width of 45 feet. We are providing an architectural standard on that track that accounts for 80 -- that the houses be 80% brick or masonry product. We're also requesting, and we've got track 2, that's a 5 and 1/2 acre track on the far east side of the project. That track adjacent to Mustang Road, we're proposing it be developed under the R2 guidelines. We are proposing a minimum lot size on that tract of 7,800 square feet as opposed to the 6,000 that's permitted under the R2 guidelines, and we're proposing a minimum lot width of 65 feet in comparison to the 60 feet that's established under the R2 guidelines. We've also limited it to the houses to be single-story in that track, as well as providing for 100% architectural standard that it -- or 100% brick or masonry product, obviously exclusive of the doors and the windows. So those are generally the highlights of the PUD. I think if you look at our request, we feel like it's reasonable, and we certainly feel like it's compatible with your comprehensive plan, which establishes a goal that large-scale subdivisions provide a variety of different housing tops and densities and price points. And so we feel like that this actually gets a little bit closer to achieving the objective of your comprehensive plan. So staff has recommended approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and we'd ask for your approval as well.
There's a notation in the staff report that previous paving may be used.
I think we've got that.
Is that something you contemplate?
It's the wrong staff report. It was an error, and I think that it's been revised, and that goes with a different application.
I'm sorry, you're right. I have not substituted my new staff report. Sorry about that. Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on this item today? Commissioners?
I do have a question. So on our staff report on this back page, you know, we can kind of see the area of development Does your client on this, does the applicant, control that as well as that part of the full development?
We control the full 320.
Is any of that built yet?
Yes, there are three phases that abut Mustang Road that are currently constructed. The fourth phase is under construction currently. The fourth phase sits immediately to the east of what would be track 1 in this PUD.
But the area immediately to the north of the northmost subject site, that's built?
That is not built. That's a different project.
So you're not control that?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Right. The subdivision to the -- the track 1 is the farmost north property line of our project. Everything north of that is a separate project that is not constructed at this time.
Gotcha. That your client does not control.
We do not control north of that. Everything else, southeast, west, we control.
Okay. My comment was going to be, I'd love to see, you know, some kind of road connection.
There is a connection immediately to the east in the phase that's being constructed right now. There is a street stub to the north.
Okay, I didn't see that in my -- but we don't have that in this, so.
Correct. But there is a connection. And there's actually two. There's another one out of South Fork and even further east.
That's all I had.
Everybody's asleep.
If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion. I'll move to recommend approval on PUD 1727.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 7. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you all.
Item number 8 is an application by Crest Foods of Yukon to rezone 715 North Checkhall Road from PUD 1145 and PUD 1086 districts to PUD 1728.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Nick Haras with Crest Foods is also here with me. This is a wonderful opportunity at the fringe of the city, right by Yukon, to install the latest Crest grocery store. I say it's a wonderful opportunity in that it will allow for a significant generation of sales tax, presumably not just from Oklahoma City residents, but also people in the city of Yukon that live just on the other side of I-40. This is an area of Oklahoma City that's been fairly active in the last year, or two, or five. This is a strange situation in that this parcel is actually covered by two separate PUDs. The reason that we had to come in here is the food and beverage retail sales, which is a use unit necessary for the grocery store, wasn't in one of the PUDs. So we're coming in with a new PUD to be able to unify and make simple what would be allowed here. So with that, staff does recommend approval. I do need to address one of the TEs. TE number 1, we are in agreement with. TE number 2 asks us to limit our signage to one. We'd ask for 3 in the PUD, so we'd ask for perhaps 2 as a middle ground. In looking at the staff report, we also discovered an issue we probably need to address for the third technical evaluation. We'd like to add language that would allow painted concrete building panels. Mohammed, would you give me the elevation? Painted concrete building panels be allowed in Section 9.1? We think it's already allowed. It's going to look like the stereotypical Crest store, but the architect, out of abundance of caution, wanted to make sure that it is explicitly allowed. Part of the concrete panels will be painted concrete. What is prohibited is the exposed concrete. Art will be painted. Staff just felt more comfortable to, again, out of abundance of caution, to add a TE 3 to allow painted concrete building panels. So with that, on behalf of to answer any questions, there is no concern that I've become aware of. I believe nobody submitted any letters of protest, and I don't think anybody's here.
Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Box?
Will there be other retail in this center as well?
Yeah, so Ms. Lincoln, if you could go to the aerial. If in your staff report, what you'll see is you've got this image in the staff report. There you go. You can see the subject site. That's a retail center. I believe it's got an academy, other retail establishments, restaurants. So this is becoming a fairly significant source of retail and shopping for the west side of Oklahoma City.
I'm going to continue my streak here. I see a couple items in the staff report here again, sidewalks. I can't decipher if you guys are providing them or not. It doesn't appear so.
I assume that we will have sidewalks.
Yeah. The ordinance, I believe, requires sidewalks, and so there are sidewalks.
Yeah, I was just -- in looking at the plan, that was unclear, so I just wanted to verify.
Sure.
Second question is actually, I'm not a big supporter of our parking minimums. You guys are providing a lot of parking. Do you need that much parking? Could we perhaps talk about, you know, giving you guys a break on, providing less parking, saving some money here?
I'm going to let Mr. Haras address that.
Nick Haras, 1601 Northwest Expressway. In every location we've done since 1994, we've had parking of this ratio in regards to the square footage of the building. We are a top 50 independent grocery retailer in the United States. Our volume is in excess of an average grocery store, and we view this as a safety for our customers to have more parking and a convenience to get them in and out.
So you find that this much parking is used?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I mean.
I'm used to driving by, you know, parking lots this big, and you see a quarter of it.
Right. And there's definitely times where it looks like that, but I would say, you know, in our peak times, though, this much parking is very much appropriate.
Okay. That's all for me.
Anybody else? Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of PUD 1728. That was amended to two freestanding signs.
Yes, ma'am. And then adding the third TE about the painted concrete panels.
And adding the third to allow for painted concrete.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 8 as amended to permit two freestanding signs and painted concrete building panels. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Item 9 is an application by Haven Enterprises to rezone 1146 Northwest 40th Street from R1 Single Family to SPUD 1131.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. On behalf of the applicant, Mr. Rocky Clark, who is also here with me. This is an SPUD that would turn what is two lots, formerly one house, into three separate single-family individual homes. They would be platted. The intent would be to plat these and sell these off individually. We did -- there was a previous application on this site that Ms. Powers had made us aware of that generated a lot of interest and a lot of protest. And so we were able to have a neighborhood meeting last night, and the neighborhood meeting was very favorable. In the end, I think everybody was fairly happy. There were some concerns shared by a couple folks, but the -- I think that the majority of the people there were happy and supportive. This has been a vacant lot for at least 20 years, from what we understand. And so there was a little bit of excitement that there be some new development interjected into the neighborhood. And when we left the meeting, I believe everybody's concerns had been answered. So the style of structure that Mr. Clark is going for is, you know, the modern kind of urban farmhouse type. We do have architectural standards in the SPUD, and there are -- there is just the one TE that we agree to. Ms. Powers asked that we perhaps add an additional TE. In the signage portion of this SPUD, we say per R1 standards, we're fine to clarify that, to say that there will be no signage, except for perhaps, you know, for-sale signs by realtors. But no neighborhood identification signage is intended in this development. And Ms. Powers also had a question as it relates to utilities. I'm not sure if Kendall's still here or if he ran out the door. It appears he has. But he has -- oh, there he is. He confirmed that the utilities are available. He's looked at it. They're available along Military is where we'll be drawing our utilities from.
Okay. I don't know whether the commissioners will remember, but there've been a couple of times when we've done these kind of multi -- multiple single-family units on a given lot where there's been some concern about having to cross somebody's yard to get to your utilities in the event of a breakage or something. But in this case, that's not going to be an issue, so that's good. The other thing that was really important to the neighbors is that the sight line is preserved straight down both 40th and down Military. So the buildings do not stick out in either direction further than the other buildings that they line up with, so. The meeting did go quite well, and it was a palpable improvement over the last application that was presented. I'll put it that way and be as nice about it as I can. Do you have any other questions of Mr. Box? Is there anybody present who wants to be heard? If not, I'll take a motion.
I will say that I think it's a great project, and I am happy to make a motion to recommend approval.
You broke your streak. You didn't have a question.
No question. Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to approve item number 9. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 10 is an application by VT Capital to rezone 1446 Northwest 31st Street from R1 Single Family to SPUD 1133.
Commissioners, my name is Megan Egan with Midtown Attorneys, Falls 13, North Glasson Boulevard. I represent the applicant and property owner. Our application's pretty straightforward. We're not seeking to change any structure or the use of the property. It's a duplex, and it's currently zoned for a single family, so we're just trying to seek that it be zoned properly for the duplex purpose and use.
Staff, can I ask you, the summary of the SPD application indicates that it will retain all the R2 uses and it will add multifamily residential and 3 and 4 family residential. Is that necessary in order for them to do what they're doing with the property now? Or is that to permit expansion of the use in the future, or?
Yes, it's our understanding they'll have a duplex in the front, and then the other building is a living unit as well.
Yes.
So if they're separated like that and more than two, we need multifamily.
There also is, I'm sorry, there also is a notation in the staff report that there are four onsite parking spaces that will be deemed to satisfy the required parking. Is that off the parking requirement? And if so, how much?
It's basically half the parking requirement.
Okay.
Generally, you need two spaces per dwelling unit.
Okay.
We didn't -- we're too concerned about it because that's what's been there historically.
No signage. Do we have any questions of Ms. Egan? Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to recommend approval for SPUD 1133, subject to the technical evaluations presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number 10, subject to TEs. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 is an application by Sam Gresham to rezone 2225 North Gatewood Avenue from R1 to SPUD 1136.
Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd Street. I'm the owner. I have some exhibits. Can I pass these out?
Of course.
The property is owned R1, but the street is entirely made up of duplexes with a garage apartment behind it. We have that north and south of this particular property, as well as all the rest of the properties from 23rd Street on down. The aerial would give you some evidence of that condition. As I say, the one condition, my lot is empty. It's got a garage apartment on it, but the frontage is empty. But north and south of this lot is a two-story duplex, which I'm proposing to do something But north and south of this lot is a two-story duplex, which I'm proposing to, to do something similar, consistent with what's around me.
Has this lot been vacant for a long time?
It has. I, I talked to him earlier, and he said he wondered if something had burned down, and I didn't do the research to determine that. Sandblow maps would have been my only source, but I have no evidence that I have currently that it was actually occupied with a house.
Well, this is a slight departure from what we're used to seeing from you, but it's very nice. Do we have any questions of Mr. Gresham? Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard? If not, I'll take a motion.
I did want to make one quick statement. It seems like, at some point, most of the housing there had been, had been changed from R1 to, well, it's used currently for most of those are duplexes, but they're all zoned R1, so most of them are non-conforming. You know, to me, and my thoughts on a lot of this multifamily stuff, I think this is a good precedent. I'm, I want to see more of this, and I hope eventually that we can change a lot of those residents back to conforming at some point. So I'm a big supporter of this. I think it's a great project. And does anybody else have any comments? I will make a motion to recommend approval.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 11. Do you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Item 12 is an application by Aurora House Company to rezone 2944 Southwest 8th Street from R1 to SPD 1139.
Good afternoon. Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, 1819 South, or 1800 South Saro, sorry. This is a spud, a unique spud that is a, it incorporates a special event wedding venue center with a concept called glamping. And that's for 12 units of mobile homes, I should say, but more specifically, they're the skinned, metal-skinned mobile homes. And they will be permanent in nature on the site, and they'll be used to, for families to stay after a wedding, or an event, to stay there and gather as a family and bring them in to an outdoor setting adjacent to the river. And you can see on your concept in front of you of how that kind of focuses the RVs inward, towards like a campfire, an outdoor setting. And you also, to the north, have the river. This was heard, presented to the Scenic River Overlay last week, and was, is being brought before you as a recommendation of approval for this. And we did, prior to that meeting, meet with the Scenic River Overlay, I'm sorry, the planning staff, to address some of their concerns. And what you see before you right now is actually a revised, amended spud that was amended per our planning meeting and agreed to at the Scenic River Overlay. So if I could pass this out, we'll go over some of these changes, so you can see what was changed. So as those are coming out, there was originally some concern with the screening and how we had it, and how we had that proposed within the spud. It was too vague, and they requested that we narrow that down. So what we agreed to was that along the east boundary, adjacent to the east boundary of the property, we would do, we would agree to that site-proof screening would be permitted to separate the salvage yard and the residential to the east. Also, along the north and west sides of the recreational vehicles, we would be using what is, it's a fabricated berm, and it would be living. So it would have plant material over that berm to make it look like living, but it would be site-proof to make it feel like that those are, those recreational vehicles are kind of screened off, and to help with wind from the river and things of that nature when they're gathered in there. So we added B, which is the manufactured landscape, and then that would be vegetated. And we struck what we had with Cypress screen that was vague in there. So, meeting with planning staff, we made those changes. Also allowed for site-proof screening of the one residential unit that is kind of in the middle of this proposal. My client is currently in negotiations with the owner of that property to purchase that property, and then that way we could incorporate that into this project, and they wouldn't. But we wanted to allow for the site-proof screening around that in the case something didn't go, didn't go through on that purchase. Signs, there is a sign exhibit that's in here, and you'll see it up on your screen right now. It's, it's, they, planning staff at first had some reservation about the ways signage was specified, but this piece of signage would sit actually out along the north, the north or the northwest portion of the site. It would be able to be seen from the river and things, and it's what it is and the reason it's so large, and you can see the person that's in front of it. When you look down through it, you can actually see a visualization of a moon because of the shapes of the signs. It's kind of a, it's kind of a piece of artwork, sculpture, and it'll be made out of metal, but it also, it will have the name of the project on it, too. And that has been, from day one, what was presented to me by the client, and they're, they visualize it as, you know, places that people can take pictures by, people that people can come see, things of that nature. And they visualize it as kind of a piece of art as well, and that's the reason the size is being asked for. We also requested that 75-square-foot just monument signage on the street to the south be allowed, just for, just to let people know where it's at.
This, this portion of it, the artwork portion of it, is not lit at all?
We did allow for uplighting, illumination of that.
From, from the ground?
The building and architectural requirements, we had what you see stricken out before you in there, and planning staff asked that we just commit to the Scenic River Overlay's building design restrictions, which we were, it was, it was really over the stucco comment in there, and we really didn't intend to do stucco anyway. We were on board with that. It was planning's idea to add in the raw concrete tilt-up to allow for that. They actually requested that we put that in there. They said they were fine with that, so. We agreed, what you see there is exactly as they asked us to put that in there, so we agreed with the planning staff on that. We agreed on sidewalks around the unit, and our clients looked at other properties for this event, but they really wanted it to feel, you know, outdoor, kind of, kind of like you're camping, and what better place to do that in Oklahoma City, in, in the urban area than by the river. Scenic River Overlay was excited to see something besides the city of Oklahoma City come and apply for an application along the, in their district. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that I can. I did, I did receive the one letter of protest only after I was, it was brought to my attention this afternoon. We requested it from the city. You know, the project details, we're trying to clarify those here. The road, we agreed to the TE to show the transportation path. The use of, I don't know what number three means, the use of bullying, liquidation tactics. I don't understand number four. It says that they'll create premature damage and wear of the adjacent public landscaping. There's an entrance to the river path directly there that is paved the entire way. Also, great for events where they can allow people to go out and take walks along the river, ride their bike along the river, to be, you know, associated with these events. So I don't understand that comment. We believe that this is adequate land for this, for this project, and, and want it to feel urbanized. We don't want it spread out. The environmental concerns, we have to meet stormwater quality requirements. We, you know, we can't discharge into the river, and there's water and sewer there, and the, and the, and they're appropriate to fulfill this use. So the sizes are appropriate to fill this use. My client says, I think that this letter came out on August 2nd. They in fact talked to Ali on August 2nd. I was made aware of that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We do have several people who are signed up to speak on this, so we'll let them speak for themselves, I guess. Do we have any questions of our applicant before we let him go?
I do. You mentioned three or four different terms for what you're putting in there. Are these mobile homes? Are they airstream trailers? Are they 60-foot-long and four-bedroom?
They're airstreams.
20-foot-long, and just like what you'd see towed behind a car going to the Grand Lake?
Would you want a better?
They're airstreams.
Would you come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record?
What she said, I'll reiterate. The 30-foot airstreams without a bathroom in it, they're actually buildings behind them that will have the toilet and showers and, and small coffee bars that they're backed, that they're backed up to.
So these are small camping trailers?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But, but I understood it that those are going to be, they're, even though they're trailers, they're, they're basically permanently placed there. They don't come and go.
They are permanent. They were, the only reason they would be, they would be pulled off that site if they had to be fixed for some reason.
Okay. Makes it easy to repair your, your, your stuff in the trailer. You can take it to a repair shop. You don't have to have somebody come to it.
Right.
Again.
Wheels off, wheels on, skirting around the bottom of it to connect it to the ground?
Wheels on, want it to look just like an airstream. That's the, the concept.
But tied to the ground with some sort of anchoring system?
We've allowed, it says in here that they're not required to be tied down. We're, we're fine. I spoke to Ms. Powers about that earlier today. You know, we could put a post-up with a ball on it, hitch it down, lock it, you know, or, they're permanent. So they're not, they're not intended to be pulled out of there for any reason.
This might be a staff question, so if in the future, let's say this property is sold, will they be able to then just remove those airstreams and then allow it to just be a normal RV park, or would that just not be permitted? I mean, it just sounds like, it's, it all sounds fine if the only thing we're going to do is allow them to be there, you know, permanently for now with this property owner, but suppose that it's a different person, and they just want to operate a regular RV park. Would that be okay?
Let's, let's, rather than answer that question, let's put it this way. I think that we need language in the PUD, in the SPD, that ties the recreational vehicle park use unit to the event center, so that if it no longer is an event center, it will not be an RV park. How's that?
We're agreeable to that.
I think that's the case, the way it's written now.
I think so, too, but let's, let's take a hard look at it and make sure.
Yeah, but it could be operated as a standard RV park.
We will put, we'll make sure that there's language in there that doesn't allow for that.
Okay.
I'll work with-
Good catch.
I'll work with staff on that.
That's, no, it's a good catch. I'm glad, I, we do want it to be clear. I do have several people signed up to speak on this item. Let me see if I can read these. Curtis Dewey. Could you come up and give us your name and address, please?
My name's Curtis. We're here at 1109 South May Avenue. I'm representing Best Price Auto Salvage on behalf of the owner. Since we do have so much invested in the area, we just had a couple of concerns and questions for the commissioners to consider. Like he said, we'd, my boss did speak with the owner on August 2nd, or the Aurora House Company, to get some clarification. Just had a couple of concerns. I guess we spoke with a gentleman named Clint. I'm really glad to see what we have, because projects have been very vague, even to right now. Just now, like, we're figuring out what it is. We haven't been clear on it. We had concerns on the road, that the business is intending may not be able to support the amount of traffic it creates. Right there on May, I mean, it's really, the two lanes, it gets enough miles as it is. We're just afraid of all the extra traffic that's going to bring in. I'm concerned that the company may harbor activities, rental items, that will cause premature damage or wear to the scenic river view. Have, you know, have a weekend full of bikes or whatever. I don't know what they're going to be renting there, but we still don't know that. So we have additional landscaping cost and maintenance cost, and tied to that. Environmental concerns, construction due to close proximity of the river course. He did mention about the sewage disposal systems, since this is a recreational vehicle area. Wanted to make sure, you know, everything was properly concerned, properly taken care of there. We had lots of concerns from the neighbors who are directly adjacent from the property of how this business is going to affect them directly. A lot of the guys, we really, they don't want it in the area. Besides that, we just want to make sure the company's considered the neighborhood's current condition when planning to invest in it. We have a salvage yard right there, a lot of houses that were already in condition the way they are right now. We don't want them to come in and, hey, you know, your grass is too long, or we don't have a citation war all day long. That's really all my concerns. Best price. Anything else, I'd be more happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to point out, I think this is the first time we've had a salvage yard come to protest a project. It is typically the other way around, so it's interesting.
Kenneth, and/or Linda Holland.
Sparks.
Do, do rock, paper, scissors?
Should like to defer me first.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
David Sparks, 2935 Southwest 10th. I'm directly adjacent, it looks like, to their parking lot. First I've ever seen of it, right today, because I have not even been told about anything. In fact, the plans that he has there, that's the first I've seen of those also. But a little evasive, because whenever I actually talked to the current owner of this property, his, you know, two weeks ago, exact words were, "Nothing really in plans to do anything with, just trying to make sure I can sell it at a better price." So I'm a little bit concerned about some of the evasiveness of- So, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the evade, evasiveness of, I'm not sure if the project coordinators or who. So, there's some issues there. Also, I'm a little concerned about the I-1 designation for the zone. They're wanting lodging, and I'm not sure maybe if an I-1 blanket, like you even said, if they pack up and move out, now all of a sudden, here, we've got an RV park. Oh, yay! That's not gonna be a good thing. And maybe something like even, I don't know if it's possible, but I believe you could put maybe a sunset clause within there to at least get them to reapply after maybe five, eight years. I don't know if that's within, okay. Well, if not that, possibly maybe look at maybe an O-1 or a C-1, maybe zoning, because that does give lodging abilities within that, but it does give a much higher restriction for any adjacent and abutting R-1 zones that are directly next to that.
Say, excuse me, say that again. What is it that you think you'll get with O-1 or C-1 that you?
They would still be able to have the lodging, but I believe the O-1 does have provisions for lodging of, of, within that zone, but it would give a much higher restriction to adjacent and abutted R-1 residents, or R-1 zoned areas. I believe it increases their zone, or their, the feet, of how many feet, like if they're serving alcohol and stuff like that, it increases certain things on how they have to separate themselves from the R-1 zone specifically. So, I think there might be a few concerns with the I-1 being as open as it is and not really giving any protection to the neighbors. What he didn't, of course, note also is that there is a residence directly on the southeast corner of his plans there, which it abuts that also. He may be in talks with the one that it surrounds, but there is another residence directly. I'm directly adjacent, the parking lot on that south side. That's my property, which I actually go from 10th Street to 9th Street. That's all my property right there on, which is his parking lot, which is my backyard. So, so anyway, I'm concerned a little bit about the property values, that what this is gonna do to the other residences in the area. Not saying that these are high-dollar, multimillion-dollar mansions, not happening in this area. I know that. But even then, it is gonna have an effect on it, one way or the other. So, I am concerned about that. I'm not against this, a little bit, understand, I'm not against this project. I think it would, it would be something beneficial both to the, to the river area. Of course, just like Quiller Park is, it's awesome, it's great, had some great benefits, great publicity for Oklahoma City area. I think this may have, because we've all seen HGTV, they've done, you know, interviews on people that have done things like this. So, it has good possibilities. I'm, I'm not seeing a lot of interaction between what they've got going on and the residents and some of the things that are going on around there. I'm also concerned about the traffic. And with that much of it increased, and he's, looks like he's got a parking lot with... Okay, so he's got a possibility of 32 parking spots, which for that area is a closed area. There are no through streets. That whole area section right there, there is no through street from May directly to the west, because it's all blocked in. There's no direct anything from 15th Street going all the way north. So, to go into that area, you have the intention of going to that area, you live there. So, also, I am a little concerned about what I believe you brought up about them tied down. This is Oklahoma. We know what goes on here. Within, what, the first two months of me moving, living there, when I first moved in, about five years ago, I had a storm shelter. I am the only storm shelter on almost three streets. It's open to everybody on all my streets. I've told them, made sure that they know that it is available to them anytime, whether I'm there or not. It's unlocked, ready to go. I don't see any provisions for that. This is directly on the side of the river. And again, this is Oklahoma. So, those are kinda some of my concerns. I'm, I'm just not seen as a residence in that area. I haven't seen a lot of forthcoming from these individuals. Like I said, that's the first I've actually seen of any kind of a layout of anything, especially the parking lot situation. So, I, I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I would like to ask, Mark, I mean, was there no meeting held with the neighborhood?
There was not a meeting held with the neighborhood. Like I said, they did mention that they've reached out to my client on two separate occasions. My client did get back with them on the 2nd of August. And then I just, I just seen, I just saw this protest today. Now, trying to...
Well, I will say, I know we've got other people signed up to speak, but just based on what I'm hearing so far today, it does sound like it would be beneficial maybe if we think about continuing this item, have that meeting, answer everybody's concerns, and come back maybe next meeting and hopefully get this resolved then?
We, I mean, we can do that. I think it's, I think it's a great project for the area. You know, I'm happy to meet with them.
I see a lot of benefits to it too, but I think there's obvious, you know, concerns worth hearing. And it's tough to do this today in this meeting, since, you know, this, this sit-down hasn't occurred. So, I'd love to propose that we do that.
Yeah. I mean, two weeks adequate?
Yeah, if you guys are...
If it works for you.
Commenable and...
Two weeks adequate to meet with us and, okay? Yeah, that, and that site plan is in the application. I don't know if you got a copy of the application, Bud, but it is in that application.
Well, Mark, will you meet with them?
I will.
And make sure that everybody here today gets a copy? And then if, if you guys will give your contact to him, I will get with him after the meeting and we will set up something with all of us. Since this is my ward, I'd love to be a part of that and help facilitate that conversation.
No problem. So, we just wanna continue it for two weeks and...
Before we do that, let me ask, is it Ms. Holland? Is that satisfactory to you? Did you wanna be heard today?
I'd like to hear about that type of site and if we can discuss it.
Okay. Well, then I'll take a motion.
Can I, before we do that, and I agree wholeheartedly with Asa, and I will vote for the continuance. As far as the parking and the traffic issue, with them having this event space there, the, the parking ratio, that matches up, right? They're meeting all those requirements. So, that's not an issue. Okay. Just wanna make sure.
The other, the other one thing I did make a note of, and I don't know whether it's a question for you or for staff, but there's a, a use unit for participant recreation, entertainment outdoor, which makes perfect sense, given, you know, your indicated use. But yet, the staff report indicates that this is a, a use unit that contemplates more than 500 people. Is it, is it limited to that, or is that a ceiling? I mean, I, the fact that, that they're asking for the ability to do outdoor recreation and entertainment doesn't necessarily mean that the venue will or has to accommodate 500 people. Okay. Okay. So, now, I'll take a motion.
I'm just gonna say...
No, I'm sorry.
I think in fairness to the applicant, though, if there's any other concerns that haven't been expressed by members of the commission that they need to be working on, and I don't know if we got comfortable with the RV park future, if this thing were to pick up and leave, but if there's anything else, I think we should let them know that now. So, when they come back, we're dealing with the neighbor's concerns and not ours. I don't have any, I just wanna make that point.
I agree, yeah. I'd like to be able to help address those in our meeting, so.
Assuming that the change is made, would that excite others a bit?
The, the question raised by Commissioner Pennington is absolutely gonna be discussed in our meeting, so.
Yeah, and I share, I think what Churro and Powers was saying about the size of the potential, and I don't know how we could, we could limit the size of those events, but when I read that language, I was equally concerned by that.
It's odd, yes.
Yeah, and that we have a mechanism in place that there, you know, the parking is calculated based on that, and we don't have overflow into the neighborhood streets.
Yeah, the last thing we want is 32 parking spaces with a 75-person event with the cars poured into the side streets in their neighborhood. Nobody wants that.
Can I address that? As far as any event that's over capacity for the proposed parking would be valeted to keep people off the street. So, we don't have parking on the street.
How is that, I mean, that, that's just something you plan to do, but you'll, make sure you address, how is that, that's in your approval? I don't know, so. I get that would be the intention, but make sure that somehow...
I'm just trying to have these discussions with you so you know what we're gonna talk about, because we, I didn't get a chance to get there, but I just wanted you to know that that was something that I was anxious to hear something about, and make sure that you think that through when you come back. So, the last thing I want you to do is come back in two weeks and get continued again, so.
I think one of the other issues you may wanna discuss when you get together with the neighborhood, since you have an outdoor entertainment possibility as a venue, you probably need to give some discussion to noise abatement, since you have some R-1 areas abutting your area. That could become an issue with your neighbors. So, you'll be prepared to discuss that.
Would you come forward, please? Give us your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Kenneth Holland, and that's my wife, Linda. And I live 2941 Southwest 10th. I have two questions. Are they gonna have anything in front of the parking lot on the south side to, to make it not look like a commercial parking lot?
I think that'll be great to discuss in our meeting, sorry.
And, and the second thing is, because this is going in, and it's gonna be beneficial to the, if it goes in, is it gonna be beneficial? What I'm trying to, actually what I'm trying to say, is this gonna make the city to where they're gonna start coming and hassling the people in the neighborhood to upgrade their stuff and do things, you know, that, most of these people don't have the money to, and it, you know, it's not the nicest neighborhood, and it's, and it's never gonna be, but just like, there's, you know, there's stuff that, that we're doing, and we don't have the money just to go out and, and do it. And we're having to, as we get the money, get things together so we can get started on doing, continuing what our plans was. Because here's, here's the thing, the city has been, they, they come down and they start hassling, and then, and then they, they, one person will tell you, this is what you need to do, and so you start doing what they tell you, and then another person will come in behind them and tell you, no, that's not what you're supposed to do. I just...
So, are you asking me whether, if this application is approved, whether it will make, and the development occurs, whether it will make it any more or less likely?
Yeah, is, is it gonna be, are they gonna be hassling or pressuring people? You know what I'm saying?
So, will it make it any more or less likely that code enforcement will be focused on your area?
Yeah, yeah.
I honestly can't answer that question. I, I think generally, it is our view that improvements to an area are a positive thing.
Yes.
I honestly can't say whether it causes the city to be any more focused. We have a, and a code enforcement system in this city that operates off of complaints. So, you know, we, we don't have code enforcement officers, as I understand it, maybe I shouldn't speak out of turn, that just drive around looking for things to write people up for. But I, you know, I don't wanna tell you, oh, no, it won't cause anything, you know, to be more closely scrutinized, because I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know.
I understand, and I, and, and yeah, there's things that needs done, and, and, how about, how about the noise?
I, I think all of those are questions that you should discuss with the applicant when you meet.
Okay. And, and is it, would there be any way, does the, does the city or anybody offer like low-interest loans or, or grants or something to, to be able to work on their property and enhance their property and make it nicer?
You are out of my area of expertise. However, the staff will be more than happy to talk to you about that, I'm sure. I've got your name and address right here.
Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate, I'm not a very good speaker, and I...
Oh, all right. You're doing fine.
I'm not real good with words, but...
You're doing fine.
Yeah. I appreciate each and every one of you and your time.
Thank you.
And thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. I know it's not easy to get down here, and those benches are very hard.
Sir, and I think to put your mind at ease, the city doesn't, like Ms. Powers said, the city's not gonna come single you out just because you have a nicer something going in across the street. If anything, if this thing is successful, it'll raise the property values all around. And so, your house, regardless of what shape it is in, will be worth more. So, if your grass isn't six-foot tall and your house isn't falling in, then nobody's gonna come and tell you that you have to put up a prettier fence or, you know, have a, a nicer shingle on your roof.
So, I think, we're making a motion to continue?
We are. Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Second.
Motion made.
I have a motion and a second? Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue. Item number 12 until August, is it 22nd? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Until August 22nd. Would you cast your votes, please? It's continued. Mr. Grubbs, I have the names and addresses of the folks who signed up here to speak. I'll make sure that staff forwards them to you.
Item number 13 is an application by BR founders to rezone 301 Northeast 13th Street from R3 Medium Density Residential to SPUD 1138.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPUD that would allow for a multi-story office building to be built. As you're likely aware, Northwest 13th Street, or excuse me, Northeast 13th Street, through that stretch is all zoned residentially, but there's been a transition over the last five years, a decade, to convert those to more office-type uses. The Dental Association is immediately to our east. You would've heard the Wall Court rezoning probably eight months ago, converting that to a former residential to an office building. And so, what we seek to do here is an urban-style office building. It's worth noting, the images I'm handing out, one of the first things that probably jumped out at you if you've driven by, is what would the home that's being built to the west say? The individual that's building that home is one of the co-owners of the building that's getting built. So, there, there is not a concern there. What we've attempted to do to minimize the parking and keep this more of an urban feel rather than a traditional suburban-style office with the building shoved back and a large sea of parking, what you'll notice in the images, Cindy, if you scroll, you'll see that, that's a good one, you'll see that you actually pull through the building and park in back. And so, I think what that will allow is, is the urban-style feel that I think is, is good for, for that stretch of 13th. There's wonderful sightlines to the downtown from that area, and so we're trying to, to capture some of that. I do wanna address some of the technical evaluations. There are five of them. The first TE asks for a 10-foot landscape buffer with trees provided along the north and the west. So, we, we don't, we don't agree to that, primarily because we don't think it's necessary. There is a 20-foot alley that still exists on the north side of our property line. So, there's a 20-foot buffer. The alley isn't opened, but it's still there, it's not vacated. So, in our opinion, there already is a 20-foot gap. Additionally, if you look at the image before you, the property to the north of that alley, although it is zoned residentially, it is vacant. There are no homes there, that the homes were removed sometime in the past. So, we don't agree to TE 1 on the north because it's unnecessary. On the west, we think it's also unnecessary, and again, the building owner is part, is the individual that's building that single-family home to the west. On number two, we do agree. What that's asking, if you look at what O-2 would allow, it allows for a stair step in height as it's adjacent to residential. And so, essentially, what staff is doing through this TE is to force the building further to the south to a point that the height would actually be permitted by right under the O-2 district. And so, we do agree to that. So, we do agree that we have a max height of 70 feet if we are at least 50 feet off. off of a single-family residential property, presumably meaning to the north, again, not to the west. So, what that does is, by agreeing to it, essentially means we agree to the, the stair-step height regulations that exist in the code for O2 office. Three is specify mitigation measures for noise and light if outdoor events will occur near residential uses. Cindy, if you could scroll back to the one, the third page on the, right there, actually go one more. The third page of the handout that I gave you, what you'll see is the outdoor, there you go, the outdoor space faces to the south, faces the downtown skyline, and so, you can't see it from this image. There's a large wall that exists to block that outdoor area, and so, the mitigation measures that we propose are as detailed in the images so that there'd be a screen wall blocking the, the line of sight and visually the outdoor patio space from the northern sightline to, if there are residences built north of us in the future. So, I believe that would adequately address any mitigation that would be needed. Again, and we're also set back fairly significantly, significantly from that northern property line. Three is, as it relates to dumpster regulations, if you look on the image before you, where we show the dumpster is really the only place we can make it work. And although we're on the property line, again, this is kinda what I mentioned in the first technical evaluation, we still have a twenty-foot alley that exists. It's not an, an open paved alley, but there's a twenty-foot buffer essentially from our site to the property line. The dumpster will be a masonry wall screening it, but the way it's, it's set up here is it allows a truck to pull in and get it and pull out, and there's nowhere else to really put it that would allow for the parking to be here rather than a big sea of parking in the front. So, we, we don't agree to TE four, and finally, TE five, we do agree to. One of the questions that was asked by Commissioner Powers was, some of the use units that are in there would lead you to believe that this would allow for an event center. That's not the intent. The uses were included out of an abundance of caution. It, it is anticipated that the owners of the building would like to utilize that space, similar to perhaps anyone else in, in their office might have an office party or invite clients. They wanna make sure they can do that, but this is not ever gonna be marketed as an event center where you might have weddings or corporate events like that. It's simply an amenity on the top of this building to take advantage of the sightlines towards downtown, to be able to utilize that space for the people and tenants of this building. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
So, when you talk about the mitigation being as it's shown, are you committing to these?
We can commit to a, a screen wall so that there is not an open patio that would be facing to the north.
So, you're not committing to the, to the renderings wholesale, but you can commit to the wall?
Yeah, so, I mean, what the TE is asking for is, you know, the mitigation measure. So, what we could commit to would be a screen wall to block visually the outdoor patio space on the roof from the residences to the north.
I think staff also needs to take a really hard look at this issue of the event center kind of use of the property. I mean, the fact that they wanna have events for the tenants of the building and they wanna make use of their roof, and I, you know, I, I don't know why they need an event center kind of use unit in order to do that, and I just assume it, we're not attached to the building because then we have to look at it like that is what it is, so...
Yeah, I feel like, I feel like those things are assumed almost as accessory uses to a business.
I believe they are.
Does every business need to go get an event center use now if they're gonna have these types of functions? I mean, I can't imagine, so...
So, the consultant that drafted this was just, like I said, he was trying to, to make clear that we didn't have an issue. We're happy to work with staff to provide whatever is necessary to, to ease that concern, 'cause that is not the intent.
Yeah, let's just be real clear about it.
Was there any concern then in striking those? Isn't that kinda what you're looking for?
I, I don't, I'm not trying to resolve this here on the spot. I want staff to take a look at it, make sure they're comfortable with it. We're expressing what it is we want to see, and we'll let it, let them figure it out.
But aren't we gonna make a recommendation today?
We are.
Okay. Which use unit specifically? I, I was just looking at, I don't know, I don't know what Mrs. Powers had in mind, but, I guess, would that be the spectator sports and entertainment?
I assume so.
Or...
I'm fine with that.
My comment was really more from the, a suggestion in the staff report that, that if it's going to be used that way, it needs to be mitigated, and, and that therefore, it was somehow being contemplated by the proposal.
There's a couple of community recreation uses in here? I don't know. I don't know what you, you guys kinda brought it up.
I, I mean, I defer to staff, they're, I don't know if Sarah's here, but whoever put that comment in.
I have my use unit book handy, so I don't even know exactly what these things allow, but it would seem to me that you wouldn't need that sports. I've never seen someone have a spectator sports entertainment restricted use unit because they had a patio. I've never seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it doesn't look to me like there is, I don't know if the spectator sports was responding to this. I don't think so. I think that was just included in there. The staff was merely looking at the renderings and the intent and wanting to mitigate that. I don't know that it was applicable to this use.
The spectator sports is needed for an, an event center. But if it's not an event center, or if it's just an area on the roof for the tenants, then that's not necessary.
So, we can just strike that use unit?
We can strike that use unit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heisman.
David, and I know that we were kinda spitballing in this conversation, in the meeting with, about the dumpsters, so, the attempts to try to reconfigure it, what happened?
They don't work. So, the civil went back and tried to cite it somewhere else, and you lose parking spaces, and then you learn, you lose those little turnaround spots. So, there wasn't a spot to do it that didn't cost you significantly.
Those two spots on the end there that look like the parking lot are open to connecting drives, is that the idea, is it eventually to be connectivity, or what?
No, they're actually like turnaround spots.
Oh, there's sort of, so, oh, so people in those parking spaces can back up and pull out?
Like little hammerheads?
Okay, so, your, your lot's been in there, so you can't really put them there, is your point?
Correct, 'cause that's where I thought.
You'd lose those parking spaces.
That's right.
Yeah.
This may be a really dumb question, but what is the clearance driving under the building?
Whatever it needs to be.
And is, and, I mean, I'm sure somebody's looked at the turning movements or, or the maneuverability of that trash truck. I mean, he's, he's backing in, but when, once he dumps, how's he getting out? Is he, is he doing a three-point turn and pulling out on the thirteenth street? And if so, where's he making that three-point?
So, and then, that's why it's limited here, primarily the, their ability to turn. But those little knockouts would allow him to reverse and then pull back out. But we did try. I mean, after the TE came out, we, we attempted to try to find a spot to move it, and, and able, in order to achieve this type of design, this is where it needs to be.
Then, in regards to the landscape, I understand what you're saying about the twenty-foot buffer in the alley, but that doesn't allow for tree plantings there, and I know that the, the lot to the north is vacant, but there's nothing to say that that couldn't be purchased and, and a, a home built there in the future. They don't have any room for, for trees to buffer those views from that office down into their backyard. And then, as well, on the west side, the, the building owner, that's his, that's his home over there, and he might not care right now, but he might sell that in the future. And again, there's no, there's no buffer over there to plant trees to prevent those views from the office down in the back of those residential lots.
So, we are, like, like I said, we're set back to a distance, actually, I think we're actually greater than, than a typical O2 office would require. So, we, we are meeting or exceeding that setback as it relates to O2 next to single-family, and the concern being obviously the, the ability to view, and so, I think by exceeding the code requirements, I'm not sure what the concern would be. And we do, I mean, you see, we do have several spots along that, that north line where trees will be planted, but based on space, we do need to park up to that, that line.
Have you had someone signed up to speak on this item? David Glover?
Howdy. Land and Commission, good to see you guys. Nice to be here. I own the land right...
Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Fifty-four thirty-seven North Military. I live in Brookhaven Neighborhood Association area, but I own the hundred and twenty feet, and another family friend owns the other land that is all the way adjacent to the backside of the property. And we aren't against it, we just would like to, we had a couple of questions. And one of the questions is, what is the current R3 height compared to what this building would be? 'Cause R3 is the current zoning, I guess, right?
It is. Do we have that at hand?
I believe it's two and a half stories, thirty-five feet.
Okay, and what, what's the plan here? Seventy, okay. Next is currently, and I actually told this to Mr. Box, which you might not, might've already known anyway, is that a number of years ago, I researched, and there's an unvacated alley all along the axis east-west from Styles to Walnut, from thirteenth all, all to fourteenth. And a number of neighbors, and my family friend that also owns the land adjacent, we have two hundred and sixty feet behind this building and a little, and also on the R1 building that's being built, is that we're interested in the possibility of, you know, having that unvacated alley sort of be not reopen, but just sort of cleared, because right now, there's scrub and brush, and we know that the neighbors would be in charge and responsible for that, but we're just wondering what the project's feeling on that alley actually being there or not.
Mr. Box, would you like to speak to that?
What was the question? I'm sorry. I, I don't know that we have a preference. I mean, that it would have to go through District Court, or I guess, city or somebody would have to do something to reopen it.
It's not, never been closed?
It's been closed. It hasn't been vacated. There's an ordinance from nineteen twenty-one closing the alley. It's not vacated. So, it's still, it's in a state of limbo.
So, nineteen twenty-one, does it have that language in it that says it's vacated, but it's just an ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
It's just an ordinance. We've gone to the courthouse and the county clerk and confirmed it has never been vacated. So, it is still owned, it's platted, essentially a public right-of-way, not owned by any adjacent properties.
And would be maintained by the city. But for people that, I mean, the strong neighborhood initiative, put in new sidewalks, signage, you know, the neighborhood's really coming back, it's looking really great over there, and everybody's really proud because it's kind of like a little, you know, oasis, you know, that's sort of landlocked there. And having an alleyway back there would be very helpful because then you could have more green space next to the new sidewalks that are in and have sort of a more open area in front of the houses versus having to have driveways potentially, you know, wide driveways in front.
Yeah, we, we're fine with whatever they wanna do, whatever the city or other property owners wanted to do with the alley. Our site is designed without the alley in mind, meaning if it was open, wonderful, if it wasn't, it doesn't impact our design. But that, I mean, that's a, perhaps a broader discussion, frankly, citywide, where you have alleys that are, are an alley in name only and are nothing but encroached fences and trees that exist.
Sure.
I don't think we can solve that problem here today, Mr. Glover?
What, what'd you say?
So, I don't think we can solve that problem here today.
I understand. I just wanted to bring it up to find out what their thoughts and feelings were so that in the future, you know, if enough neighbors wanna get together to sort of open up one side or another, it could be possible. And of course, it is gonna have great sightlines. It is gonna mess up ours, but we understand that, so... Thanks.
Thank you. Did we have any questions for Mr. Glover? No? I, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Did we have any discussion amongst ourselves, or are we ready to make a motion?
Just a question for staff on the, on the, so, do, for, to meet this requirement about the screened wall, do we need to go ahead and, how do we phrase that, or what's the best way to say that, as far as the screened wall at the top?
Yeah, I think we could, the TE, we could modify what the TE is and require a screen wall so that there is not a line of sight from the outdoor patio on top of this structure to the north.
Okay.
So, you're essentially swapping the, the ask in the TE was to come up with mitigation measures, and we can just use TE three to specify the mitigation measures.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, let, let me be clear about what it is you're proposing, which is that we eliminate TE's one, four, that we leave TE two in place, and that we modify TE three to indicate that there'll be a, you come up with the language you want, that there will be screening on the roof to prevent line of sight?
Man, it sounded so good the last time I said it. I'd hate to try again.
Try again.
A, a, a wall of sufficient height on the roof of the structure to prevent a line of sight from the outdoor patio space to the north. Perhaps that was even better, I don't know. But I think staff is...
This, the second one was worse.
Taking meticulous notes on everything said, so... But yes, we don't agree to one, we don't agree to four, we agreed to two and five, and then the, the modification to three, as I just stated.
Okay.
Whichever was better, one or two.
And, yes, and deleting the participant recreation, sports recreation. Okay? Somebody wanna take a stab at a motion?
I'll, I'll try. Let's start with, I move approval of item thirteen, and to include the technical evaluations except for the following amendments. Eliminate technical evaluation one, eliminate technical evaluation number four, eliminate use unit eighty-three-hundred point six nine, and finally, to amend technical evaluation number three to provide for a, for sufficient screening on the rooftop to block the line of sight to the north.
I like that. I thought that was very well done.
Way better than I could do.
All right. Yeah, that was the best one, yeah. Second.
Okay, so, I have a motion and a second, as stated. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved. No? Mr. Pennington? There you go. It is approved.
Item number fourteen is an application by Sweetgrass Partners to rezone eighty-five zero one South Air Depot Boulevard from PUD ten forty-seven to PUD seventeen twenty-six.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, five forty-two Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a, a bit of a unique PUD application in that the PUD ten forty-seven that the site is currently zoned essentially allows all of the uses that we are proposing through this application, but what we're seeking to do is rearrange them in an order that we think will provide for a, a better overall development than could otherwise be built today. And so, what you, what you see is a five-track development going clockwise. Up here in track one, we have general commercial-type uses. Track two is a multifamily piece. Track three is a duplex development. Track four is a single-family development, and track five is an industrial development. I have representatives from each of the different ownership groups who will own each of these tracks here today to answer various questions that, that might come up. It's, it's worth noting, we did have a neighborhood meeting. Your colleague, Commissioner Privet, happens to be the HOA president of the neighborhood to our west, and so, last week, we did have a neighborhood meeting to discuss any questions or concerns about the development. It was generally positive, I, I think. I think there was some, perhaps, relief in how this is organized compared to how it is currently constituted, and so, we didn't, we didn't have any, any negatives except for the, the one person who did come about thirty minutes after the meeting was over, voiced strong opposition to the field going away. And we explained, there's really nothing we can do there because it is already zoned, and, and somebody could develop it now if they sought to. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I do wanna go over the, the TEs. On TE number one, so, we, we agree to it, we think we've already done it. What you see in this image before you, there's faint white lines throughout it. Those are pedestrian paths, and so, the intent is for somebody in the southern piece of this development, in, in the single-family piece, to be able to use sidewalks and walking trails to get to, you know, the commercial piece. So, we, if the, if staff wants something else, we're happy to provide that, but we, we do agree with it, and we, we think we've done so. TE two, we don't agree to. Chuck Wiggins is here to, to discuss this. That is concerning the track five, which is the industrial tract. It's worth noting that he also owns and operates the industrial space immediately in... It's worth noting that he also owns and operates the industrial space immediately north of that. That doesn't have any regulations on the, on the hours of operation, so I think it would create a, frankly, an inequitable situation where there are arbitrary requirements on this that don't exist north. Further, there is a good relationship, my understanding is, in an ongoing dialogue with the neighborhood to the west, which is a separate neighborhood from Mr. Privet's neighborhood, with the industrial user, and they expressed some relief that it was going to be similar to what already exists. Additionally, on our western boundary, exists a, I believe it's 150-foot-wide OG&E high-voltage transmission line. So we have a, you know, essentially a buffer that exists just naturally, and so the setback is fairly extraordinary from the actual single-family homes to our property line. And what you can see in the site plan before you is we're simply trying to mirror the development that exists to the north. So TE number 2, we don't agree with. Number 3, we agree with, kind of. What we'd like to do is modify it, the way it's currently written creates some problems. Along our eastern boundary, there exists a pipeline, which is why you see a pretty good-sized setback already, from Air Depot right-of-way to where our development starts. Because it's a pipeline and in an easement, the owner of those easement rights is not going to allow us to plant trees that might be invasive, they're certainly not going to let us burn it and mound dirt and change the grade of the surface. And so what we propose to modify TE3 to say is, provide a 50-foot buffer along South Air Depot Boulevard, as measured from the centerline of the right-of-way. So I think we're still getting to what staff is intending, but we're not putting ourselves in a position of being subject to, you know, problems with the oil and gas company that owns those easement rights. And then, we don't agree to number 4. Staff has asked to provide a 100-foot setback from Abbott Lake. I'm not, I'm not frankly clear where that setback would begin, and I'm not sure what the purpose is, but we do have a, I mean, there is a setback of some sort, and it varies. I mean, some are well over 100, some are under 100. So what you see in track 4 is, although it's slightly hypothetical, it's actually a plat that I believe Chris Anderson has already drawn, so we're fairly clear as to where these, these lots are going to be and the distance away. Ideal Homes will be the developer of track 4, they do a wonderful job of eco-friendly type of development. I assume that's what the concern is here, but we can't agree to 100-foot setback from the lake. And finally, 5, we don't agree to 5 as written. One of the big concerns that was raised at the neighborhood meeting to our west last week was that they didn't want that connection, and so we are, you know, we would ask to not have TE 5.
I thought we decided it was okay, as long as it didn't connect to the industrial development?
Right, if it was just a residential connection and not on the industrial part of it, which I'm fine with the connection. I mean, it gives people another option to cut through that neighborhood, not our neighborhood. Personally, I think most people that are going to live there are going to take Air Depot and get to that neighborhood, if they're, unless they just really like traffic.
So I know that there are some residents, perhaps one is here, that will speak to that. We leave it to sound discretion of the planning commission.
I mean, I totally understood the concerns about there being heavy industrial traffic, and so, I mean, that makes perfect sense to me, that it not connect to the industrial portion, not connect to track 5. But I understood that people were at least okay, if not very positive, about the idea of having the connection otherwise.
Yeah, to me, it's just another option to get out of there to go to Air Depot.
In terms of our connectivity, I think it's something we would want to see.
I certainly want to see it. I think, it's my opinion, you know, moving forward, we've struggled with this for so long, and the city's made this a priority, to the point where this neighborhood committed to it, to the west, I mean, I'm not trying to get sideways with Mike, and I understand that there's conversation that was had there, but to me, it's a commitment when you put that stub in for that connection. And, you know, whether the feelings have changed over time, are they happy or unhappy with whatever's going on next to them, I mean, if it's public street, I, you know, I say we hold them to that commitment, so that's why I want to see it.
Fair enough.
Your track 5?
Yes, sir.
You can get, it's, there is a connection between track 5 and the extension of Mid-America Boulevard, correct?
That's right.
And then there's also another connection to the east of that on the, and where does that connection go out?
There's several access points here, along with service road.
So they can navigate, trucks and things could navigate back up to the service road, but couldn't get into that track 2 piece, it's separated there?
Correct.
Right, that's what it looks like.
Yes, there's no connection.
Okay.
Correct.
So, just to be really clear, the I, track 5, the I-2 regulations do not permit any, no, they do, subject to the conditions, this is, I always get hung up on this, they permit outdoor sales and storage, what, just during the day, or just during operating hours, what is it? They're not, they're not permitted outdoor sales or storage permanently? Tell me again, JJ, you have to tell me this every time. What it says is outdoor sales and display and outdoor storage subject to the conditions contained in section 9350 dot.
I-2, you could have outdoor sales and display if it's accessory to a permitted use in I-2?
Which is similar to what the condition is here.
There is deny outdoor sales or display, though, in that area.
The, this, when I say that, the, we tried to mirror the uses and the development regs.
Is it permitted under the current PUD?
Yes. And that was not, there was no concern expressed, to our knowledge.
I don't see from this site plan, maybe Mr. Wiggins or someone's going to speak to this, it doesn't see that there are areas confined, a lot of, don't think of industrial development as outdoor sales being like a sidewalk sale or something, I mean, it's, a lot of these users need areas that they can fence off, where they can store product that's either coming and going. I don't even see any outdoor storage that shows contemplated on the site plan, where they plan to do that, but, I mean, the use is, for I-2, is, for a true industrial user, having that potential is very important, which is why people push back on it a lot. And the other piece of that is, is that goes back to the daylight hours thing, I don't know why that came up, if because it was going to be adjacent to a residential, that was the idea of including it, but that, that's, I mean, if we're going to allow industrial, that's kind of a, it's kind of a deal-breaker issue for a lot of those users. They're not going, no one's going to sign a lease on an industrial building when they don't think they can bring their truck in past 6 o'clock in January, right? That's not real, I mean, it's just not realistic. So I think we have to either get comfortable with the fact that we have a mixed-use development here that includes industrial, and, I mean, from a mitigation perspective, just knowing the product fairly well, the only thing, and I told David this when he called me about this one, the only thing that I see that gives me a lot of concern, or any consternation, is just how the back portion of those buildings would be lit, because I'm assuming these are going to be modern buildings, so they're going to be somewhere between 24 and 30 feet tall, can someone tell me that?
Yes, Chuck.
Fair, yeah? So if that's true, that lighting on the back of the building is the thing that you've got to concern yourself with when it's going to be adjacent to residential, because it's going to, it's going to peer back, and you do have a drive lane, so.
For what it's worth, I attended this neighborhood meeting for two reasons, partly because I'd never been to one in Warford, but also because I took a look at this and thought, well, this is crazy, you've got room to move the industrial over here, why wouldn't you move the residential over there? And so I, I didn't doubt for a minute that Mr. Box was telling me the absolute truth, that the people out there really preferred this, but I wanted to hear it myself, and I do. I mean, they, given the conditions under the current existing PUD, this is actually the layout they preferred, so.
No, totally understand, I just, as we think about the mitigation, the daylight hours thing is, again, is, it's kind of dead on arrival from a, from a developer-user standpoint, and so I'm trying to figure out what we're, what our real concerns are, so if there's another way we can try and mitigate those concerns without creating conditions that are going to really hamstring the use of the property, right? So Chuck, my question would be, at the back of the building there, you, there's a, looks like they've included that, there's a sidewalk there, are there going to be, are there overhead doors contemplated back there?
There will be doors in the back of the building, we're talking about the southernmost, the two southernmost.
Yeah, that roadway in between the track 4 and the track 5.
Right, so those buildings will have the same kind of parking and travelways as exist on the white buildings immediately to the north. So those will be doors, but not overhead doors.
So there's no overhead doors on the back?
Correct.
Okay, and then the lighting?
There's not adequate room there to move trucks.
That's great, and then the lighting back there, is there a way that we can, through the code or something, staff, is there a way we can alter that lighting to reduce spillover? Because like I said, the building's going to be 30 feet tall, right, somewhere between 24 and 30 feet tall, so is there something we can do with that lighting to try to protect it from shining in? Because what, what happens is if you get into a situation where you get into security concerns or something like that, tenants will start complaining and they want more lighting, lighting's the first place you go to add security, so.
I mean, I think as a practical matter, we're interested in shielding lighting from adjacent property owners, that's not hard to do, you know, it's just a fixture that is covered and directs it to light down, so I don't think that's an issue for us to do.
Okay, I mean, that language would be great, that's the only thing that I see, especially if there's no doors back there, because that's going to keep all the truck traffic back there, it's just going to be for circulation.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I mean, I don't, I don't see any issues with that from my.
In terms of lighting, talk to staff, I mean, the code is already going to require that we shield lights against adjacent residential.
Got it.
I, I, I've been, I've been making inquiries about, you know, new lighting technologies. Apparently, it is much easier to actually limit and direct light than it used to be. We have this language in the code, it's the same language we've always had, had forever anyway, and, you know, you can go out to any car dealership next to a residential area and read a book in, you know, three streets away, so. But I think currently, it's actually more possible to achieve the goal of actually limiting light spillover.
Yes.
So we would encourage that.
Great, we will too.
I have, people signed up here to speak, Chuck Wiggins was one of them, did you have something else you wanted to tell us?
No.
No, okay. We'll just let anybody come down here and talk.
Boyd Fulton, 8508 Canyon Trail Drive. I live where the 84th stub is, I live two doors down. I just wanted to be, put on the record that I support this as-is, I don't want that stub opened. I guess I'm in the minority, I thought Mr. Privet understood me, I guess not, but that's how I am. Thanks.
So I want to make sure I understand you, you would prefer not to see 84th Street opened up?
Correct.
Okay.
Why? I mean, what are you making first?
Well, you want the long or short? One reason is, and I didn't realize this until our meeting, Oak Ridge, they complained about, the entrance from Mid-America for the industrial park is about, what, about 100 yards of football field length from Caden Trails, and they get truck traffic down Caden Trails, and I didn't realize that until then. I'm afraid that's going to happen to us. Some GIS is going to show there's a stub there, and people are going to drive down 84th, a truck is going to drive down 84th trying to get to the industrial area. We already, we already agreed that that's not going to be opened up, but there it is.
Mr. Fulton, is that, is that service road right there, I can't remember, is it two-way or one-way?
The.
The I-240 service road?
Oh, it's, it's two, two-way.
It seems to me like that's something that could be addressed by signage, but.
Yeah, and they've talked about it, actually, on that neighborhood on the north at Oak Ridge, is trying to get some kind of sign there to let them know, because they've had multiple trucks get stuck just on their cul-de-sac and run over their light poles and their signs, and, you know, it's just.
Destroy their sidewalks, I didn't realize that until then.
I think it's way more likely they go that way down trying to get to it than they do going all the way around to 84th, but I, like I said, I think they'll get stuck down Air Depot trying to get over there, too. But yeah, at the same time, they could go down 84th and come through the neighborhood, but, you know, we have people.
I mean, it's a public street, I understand that.
We've had people park their sometimes in our neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you, thank you for coming, I know it's a long way.
This is quite a powerful neighborhood over here, I need to go, I need to go visit.
I don't have anybody else signed up to speak. Do we have any additional questions of our applicant?
My question would just be, yeah, where are we landing on the street, on 84th?
That's not a question for the applicant.
Well, I felt like, other than, other than Boyd's comments, it seemed like Mike, to some degree, addressed what seemed to be the concerns that you said the neighborhood had, are, is this applicant in support of the connection, is my question.
We, we're in support of what you, as the commission, believe.
What are your concerns with the connection, is my, are my question, because I think those are obvious. I'd like to hear why you guys don't want to connect.
We wanted to support the neighborhood, and the people that didn't want it.
Okay.
Mr. McCown, do you have something you'd like to add?
You can't sit there and nod if she knows your name.
Richard McCown, 30 Northeast Second Street. I was, I was trying to eyeball it in, if there is a connection made, it would definitely come into the residential portion, and I think that is possible, but again, we're about being good neighbors, and if there's a way that we wanted to just do a pedestrian connection, because we're building this really cool green infrastructure, that might be a nice gesture as well, and sort of we kill two birds with one stone, a nice gesture to the neighbors, you can come right down the street, enjoy the lake, and, and now, we haven't brought traffic. I don't know if that's a way to get halfway there, but.
I think we should do both.
We just, we just kind of want to be good neighbors, is our main motivation.
I get it, and I, you know, you know, I'm a huge fan of yours, Richard, and I'm not trying to bust your chops on this one, but I do think eventually, as a city, like we, we talk about this all the time, and we have to at some point start to put our foot in and implement, and so to me, I have to.
I don't know where you've been, but we've been doing that for quite a while, I think.
We see a lot in here, we're neighborhood, the neighborhood will come and say, we don't want our stub connected.
That happens often.
And we give them that option.
We do.
We've done that several times, at least since I've been here, and I think at some point, we have to say, no, you, you put the stub in, we've made a commitment, let's do this.
Well, first of all, they don't put the stub in, but.
It was part of the development of that.
Okay.
You know, I just want to, I think that connection is critical, and I liked the option of the pedestrian connection, but with the Tinker Graper Trail there, at the northeast corner of track 1, I think you're going to see a lot of residents from the neighborhood there to the west that want to access that, and give them an opportunity to do that, not having to go out on the frontage road, I think is the way to go.
I agree completely with what's been said, but just to clarify, sorry, we, it's, it's a long day, but the consensus at the neighborhood meeting was to not have the connection.
That was not my recollection.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Maybe there wasn't a consensus.
Yeah, I don't know if it was really a big issue, honestly. I, like Neil was saying, I'd like it so I could, you know, ride a bike over there and get to the graper trails a lot easier.
Then I would.
If there's a, if there's some kind of pedestrian connection, you know, I can still do that, but.
And I agree with the points that have been, been made already, I think we should go ahead and allow the connection, I think that's what we really want to happen as a city, and I think the neighbors, the existing neighbors will be happy that they can access those amenities, too. I think it's win-win.
Yeah, I, personally, if I lived at 84th close, I'd take it out there, jump over and get on the highway and be elated that I could do that now, because now you've got to go in the sooner, and it's. Because now you got to go into Sooner and it's ridiculous most of the time. And I'm in favor of the connection.
And if, if there's something that needs to be done with signage as far as, you know, alerting truck traffic that this is not a way for them to go.
Yeah, and I don't know.
I'm all in favor of that. Maybe we should even initiate that application ourselves.
Whose responsibility that is, or, you know, what, who would do that, but.
I have a question, Sarah. On, on the issue of maintaining a 100-foot setback from Abbott Lake, I think that's probably not feasible here, that particular language. Is there something you would like to say instead?
Well, in the existing PUD, that was, they thought that would be a common area, and they were going to plant 50 trees around it. It was really planned as amenity. I'm not saying that this pod is not doing that. We just didn't see the same type of landscaping and commitment in, in this language. They will have to plat Track Four. So however that needs to be worded, whatever they can commit to, to bring that back, as, in the plan as a common area would be, you know, however you, you all work that out.
The lake will be a common area. The green space will be platted as common area.
And we'll make that clear in the text here.
Sure, yeah. I don't know that one individual property owner would want to maintain the entirety of the lake. That'd be a long day of mowing, perhaps, but.
Um, is there some way you want to designate the green space? You're not going to refer to an exhibit, I know.
I mean, we're going to plat. When we come in to plat, it'll be, there will be platted common area.
But I'm asking you, for the language, for the text here, as an alternative perhaps to TE Four, is there some way you want to refer to that?
Not really. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know how to do that. I mean, the, the, the lake and the area associated around the lake, except for the, the pieces that are contained within a lot, will be platted as common area.
Well, how sure are we about what we're looking at here? Can we refer to the exhibit?
Well, yeah, the lake exists. I mean, it's there.
I'm talking about how sure we are about the plat around it.
Chris, that is reflective of the plat, correct? Yes. So Chris Anderson of SMC has the plat, and I assume we'll be moving forward with application of the plat, pending what, what happens with, with this application.
So we can refer to the exhibit here, where the lake and the green space, as shown, will be common area? Which exhibit is that?
I'm sorry?
Which exhibit is it?
Um, to the pod, I think it's the Master Development Plan map.
Okay.
The, the additional 17-foot right-of-way, do we need to deal with that now, or is it going to be a separate application?
The what?
On 89th Street.
Oh, it'll be required.
Right.
It'll be required.
Are we ready for a motion? Are we there?
I'll make the motion to recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1729, subject to the TE's striking number two, limiting the operation hours, daylight hours, and then changing number three to provide a 50-foot landscape buffer along South Air Depot, as measured from the center line of the road. And, uh, striking four and five, I think we dealt with, with the lighting as per code.
So on four, we're going to.
Maintain a setback consistent with the Master Development Plan map. On three, the, I, I would like to remove the word landscape, just because we're going to be limited in what we can plant. And so what I provide, or what I would ask for is provide a 50-foot buffer along South Air Depot, as measured from the center line of the right-of-way. And did we land on five on just a pedestrian connection?
No.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and pedestrian, our sidewalks right there are not complete anyways, so, I mean.
I'd assume if you guys have anything, we'd be connecting to it, right? Sidewalk-wise?
Yeah, on that street, on 84th, three houses have sidewalks and two other ones do not. The south side, yeah, the south side sidewalk for sure. Okay. But the north's kind of choppy. North is proof. But yeah, but vehicular.
Do you know how, how, how wide the right-of-way is? I'm concerned that 50 feet might just be the right-of-way itself. Because that's a major arterial.
It is. But there is no street.
Yeah, there's something there.
I doubt the city's going to be in a position of spending the funds to make that a street, but.
But, I mean, you guys are committing to something that's not on your property, is what I'm saying.
What? No?
The 50-foot from the center line is the road, is the right-of-way itself.
Correct.
Yeah.
We're not committing to anything not on our property.
What's that?
We're not committing to anything not on our property.
Well, it's right-of-way.
Sure.
Yeah, just want to make that clear. It's not, you, you guys aren't adding any additional space beyond the right-of-way as a buffer.
Correct.
Just the right-of-way.
Correct. As you get north, it becomes much bigger as the pipeline enters and comes up. But, correct.
And I, I do think we need to specify on TE Five that the extension of 84th Street will not have any, or there will not be access from Track Five. So.
Oh, correct.
No access to the industrial.
So we could say, provide connection west to the street stub at 84th Street to Track Four. So that is clear.
Okay, do I need to read that again for the motion?
I think that was clear enough.
Okay.
Was it, no? Not? What, Sarah? You're giving me the eye.
No, I just want to clarify TE Three. You might as well just, you could just delete it. You could just delete TE Three because it, in no way provides a buffer. That's, that's where we're confused back here, when we can, when we take this through and Curtis modifies the master design statement, a 50-foot setback from the center line of the road is the right-of-way. So we're, we're confused if.
Were you all just trying to buffer the firing range?
Yes.
From the residential? Okay.
So we can just delete TE Three, is what you're saying?
I mean, we would prefer a landscape buffer, but yes, if you're, if that's the wording, I think that you would just, if that's what this commission's agreeing to, then there's no reason to.
It's, it's pretty clear that there's a desire for a buffer here. What kind of buffer can you provide there if you can't provide 50 feet? What, you can't provide anything because of the pipeline? Is that the position?
Yeah, I mean, the pipeline's going to provide the buffer. We're not in a position to go put plant materials that could grow roots into the pipeline's facility.
Right, you're probably restricted from doing that in your easement invariably, but, but I'm saying, there's no way to provide any kind of a buffer.
Well, the buffer is there in that we cannot develop on top of the pipeline.
Right. But the reason for the landscaping is to obstruct things like noise, to help muffle things like noise. That's the reason that they, that staff wants a landscape buffer.
Oh, perhaps. The city could also perhaps install trees to muff, muffle their own noise. Is one idea.
It's not going to help. I mean, the explosions that happen there are massive. I mean, you'd have to be there to live one to, to know what I'm talking about, but rattle your teeth and things fall off your shelves. And I live almost half a mile away, so.
This is police?
Police and soon to be Fire Department Train Center.
Does the police shoot missiles out there? Like, what do they got?
They, they blow up suspicious, suspicious packages.
Oh.
Randomly, at any time of the day or night.
I, I was just trying to make clear for the record that your position is that you can't provide.
Sure.
A buffer of any kind. And it's not because you're refusing to do it.
That's right.
It's because you can't.
Right.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to make clear. I understand.
Is there, I mean, is there an opportunity for a screen wall or a fence on?
On the city's property?
No, on, on the west side of, of the right-of-way. The back of those lots that back up to.
Well, so these lots don't back up to, I mean, the, I guess, some of these here, but I mean, you'll, you'll likely have the neighborhood entrance sign here, and that's when you have the, you know, the significant setback because of the pipeline. So you will have, each lot will have a fence, and there'll be a side yard fence. So there will be some element of screening there. But from what Commissioner Privet describes, I'm not sure that there's any sort of sound wall.
Is it?
That would really.
Driving this, when you, when you, show me how far down on your, on your drawing there, how far down Air Depot actually goes? Just to where, just, just beyond your entrance.
Correct.
So there, the property to the west of the road actually does, I wouldn't call it berm exactly, but it, but there's definitely a change in grade from the roadway. But that's north of the single-family portion.
Right.
Okay. Okay. I, I, you know, I've gone through all of this with the applicant as well, thinking, I mean, when you look at it like this in a two-dimensional representation, it seems like there ought to be some way to do it. But when you go out there and look at it on the ground, given where the firing range is and the way it's set up, and, I mean, it is bermed, and it is, you know, all those things, but when you're blowing stuff up, I guess there's not much you can do to shield that. And, and like I said, there is some change in grade, I wouldn't call it a berm exactly, on the west side, but there's, there's just really not any, without the extension of Air Depot, which I don't see happening, given the conditions out there, I don't know that there's any place to put anything more. You know, I think that's why the.
Could you go the aerial?
The design of the residential area is sort of in on itself around the lake.
Right. And to your point, it, I mean, it's just very unlikely that, I mean, Air Depot dies, it's, it's unlikely it's ever going to be extended. If you look at the way in which the firing range is oriented, it's to the south. And so the only reason you'd want to extend Air Depot is if you're going to develop that land to the south. And I, I just, downhill of the, you know, firings, I'm not sure that's an adequate place to, to be developing, so. It's unlikely Air Depot's ever going to be extended.
Okay, let's take one more shot at it, shall we? Not to, no pun intended.
Motion to, uh, recommend approval to City Council of PUD 1729, subject to TE One, striking TE Two, striking TE Three and Four, and then providing the street stub on Five and pedestrian connection between neighborhoods on to Air Depot. I think that's it.
One more time, limiting access from 84th Street into the Track, into Track Five.
To, to Track Four?
Oh, yeah, and, and limit, no access to Track Five, obviously.
Limiting it, prohibiting it into Track Five. I, I don't want it to say simply that you're extending it from here to there. I want it to say that there will be no access from it into Track Four.
Okay. No, into Track Five.
Sorry, Track Five, yes.
Boyd is going to be very upset.
I think it's time to move on.
And it ends up being the industrial that gets connected based upon this motion.
And then, and then for clarity, on, on, and maybe I missed this, for TE Four, I thought we were going to make sure that, that we're protecting the, the green space. I guess it's consistent with the, the master design statement map.
Yes. Yes, that's it. So have a motion. And a second. Could you cast your votes, please? It's approved. Okay, so here it is.
Item fifteen is a preliminary plat of Redstone Ranch Villas being a, let's get that part. Got it. Its location is north of West Britton Road and west of North Mustang Road.
Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon, the Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, obviously preliminary plat. This is actually the companion item to number seven that you all, the PUD that you all approved just a few minutes ago. I think there's seven TE's, they're predominantly standard TE's. We're in agreement with those and would ask for your approval.
I, just, just curious on the staff side, why did we separate this? I mean, usually we have them together, don't we?
Just to make me wait.
Well, then I, I, I actually agree with that idea, yeah.
They could have made you come in Tuesday.
Exactly.
Do we have anybody else here who has, is, wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve item number fifteen. Cast your votes, please.
Thank you.
Item sixteen is a final plat of Featherstone Editions, Section fourteen, located west of Southwestern Avenue and south of Southwest 149th Street.
Good afternoon, Chris Anderson with SMC Consulting Engineers, representing the developer. Read the staff report, agree with the TE's. I will address TE number two. I did visit with Mike Wilson from the Fire Marshal's Office earlier this week, and we are going to provide a, an access, emergency access, coming out of the road to the north, up to the little stub that's on the road there. I can't read what, what it is. There to the west, I'm to the east. So there will be an ac, emergency access connection, and Mike said he agreed to that.
Do we have any additional questions for our applicant? Does anybody else signed up, or anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve C-7091. Nope, that's the wrong one. Nope, that's the right one, sorry. C-7091 with the access granted.
Second. I have a motion, a second to approve the final plat of Featherstone. Cast your votes, please. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item seventeen is a final plat of Memorial Road Commercial Park, west of Northwestern Avenue and north of West Memorial Road. And a variance requested a section 5.4.2, 0.8.1 of the subdivision regulations. I believe, yeah, that's, that's represented by variance by TE Two.
Mark Graves, 1800 South Sarah Road, behalf of the applicant, we're asking for a final plat to subdivide this lot into four lots. There is a, on Lot One, there's currently a Blue Pearl Petlet Nary Building that currently resides on this property. They own the entire property. There is an access road that goes back to that, that is on that dividing line between three and four, will provide access to two. There's utilities to every lot. We would ask for your approval of this plat. We agree with TE number one. We do request a variance to TE Two. I think it was about a month ago, I had another, uh, commercial plat that came in here, and the way the subregs are writ, they're written, it states it has to be in a common area, or you, it requires a variance. And I think that was discussed, how that would be addressed in the future by city, but we would ask that same request here for the variance. TE Three, I would ask that that be removed. We don't own the property outside the plat. Any, we're not showing proposed easements outside that plat. There are easements shown outside the plat, but they refer to other paving plans. So it's not something that we can grant. It's other, another firm has, has put those into place on other plans, and they were shown on the plat by the surveyor record. So it's not really something we, we can't grant an easement on the other side of our property. It's not something we're showing as proposed. So I would just ask that be stricken.
Staff, you going to speak to that for us? We're okay striking it? Okay? So I, I want to be hesitant to start this discussion, but I want to ask you, are you suggesting that the way we deal with these common area shared access is just not sufficient, like, ever, and shouldn't be a variance, but we should change the way we do it? Or is it just that in this particular case, this works better?
I think that, I think it should be allowed either way, to not, to not require variance if it's not in a common area. I've seen office parks, that they'll put the entire parking lot in a shared access and common area. and common area. Some owners prefer not to, just to have that as a shared access or parking over a common area, for maintenance reasons, things of that nature that are addressed by the Property Owners Association, so I think it, I think ultimately, it provides the same access through a private access easement or to be a common area, but I think if you call it a common area, you also have to call it an access easement or cross-access parking, you can't just call it a common area, unless it's addressed in the covenants and restrictions. So, I think that it should be allowed either way, and not require the variance. And I don't know, and we've done, this has been done in Oklahoma City for a lot of years, and I don't know that it's always been brought forth and you've had to ask for the variance. I think it's something that staff has recently recognized, and it's being brought forward now, that it's came up on another case.
Okay. Okay. As we're moving forward with our code improvement process, I think it's important to highlight these, we may be calling on you for your expertise in that process. Do we have any other questions of our applicant? Is there anybody here who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I need a motion on the variance.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance for C-7093, variance to Section 5.4.2.8.1 of the subdivision regulations.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to variance to item number 17. Could you cast your votes, please? And I need a motion on the merits.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat, C-7093.
Second.
Striking, striking 3.
Striking TE number 3.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 17, striking TE 3. Could you cast your votes, please? I did get a second, didn't I?
Thank you.
Commissioner Hinkoff, you're not voting? Thank you.
Item 18 is an application by Kevin and Darnita Maxwell to vacate a portion of the final plat of Rose Rock Phase 1, located south of Northeast 50th Street and west of North I-35.
Hello, we are the applicants, Kevin and Darnita Maxwell. We are seeking a partial plat vacate for a lot that we purchased in the Rose Rocket Estates in Northeast Oklahoma City to build a home. Currently, it has a 30-foot utility easement and building line, and we are asking to have that reduced to a 20. I've also, we've also seeked confirmation from the residents in that area for the appropriate number of signatures and approval on that. Also had conversations with Jared Martin and Krista Holder in the planning commission, and they were okay with that as well, so we are seeking your approval in this matter.
Do we have any questions of our applicant? Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of item 18.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 18. Cast your votes, please. It's approved.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Item 19 is an application by Bristol Properties to rezone 8020 Northwest Expressway from SPUD 266 to SPUD 1130.
Good afternoon, David Box, once again, here on behalf of the applicant. This is an SPUD that takes a parcel that's in the middle of a sea of C3 zoning, it's currently in a SPUD 266, which allows some C3, but also allows an auto body shop, which is what it has been for quite some time. And what we seek to do is to remove that use, but then add several other commercial uses that we believe to be appropriate along the Northwest Highway. Again, it is more restrictive than otherwise exists to our east and our west, since those are straight C3. So, there are two TEs, both of which we agree to, and be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions of our applicant?
Do you know where this ties into the rapid transit that they're proposing that runs out to Council and Northwest Expressway?
No, I'm not sure that they've finalized all the, I defer to Mr. Butler, I'm not sure if they've finalized all the stops, but I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, they have not yet, but I don't, I don't know that it goes out this far, I think it stops to the east of this.
Maybe MacArthur?
Yeah, Maria. As far as is planned.
Maria, as far as is planned? Okay.
Is there anybody else here today that wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve item number 19. Could you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 20 is an application by 2445 West I-44 to rezone 2445 West I-44 Service Road from C3 to SPUD 1134.
I'm going to recuse myself on this item, so I would ask Commissioner Cravens to come sit here, please.
I need to disclose something here as well. This is a billboard, the beginning of the year, the company I worked for was in conversation with the company applying for this, and offered to buy that company, and is no longer on the table, and we are no longer actively searching to buy this company. When I visited with Mr. Work about this, I told him I was in approval of this application prior to finding out who the company was that was actually trying to do this, so I'm going to leave it up to you guys to whether or not I should recuse myself on this or not. You know, I just told you how I was going to vote on it, but we're no longer actively trying to buy this company, and so it is a moot point as far as.
I don't know how you can put that on the list, actually.
No, I think, I think that's up to you to make your own determination.
Yeah, I've had to deal with it myself, too, and I'm afraid you have to make your own decision, I think.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, Oklahoma City, and I'm appearing here on behalf of the applicant for this rezoning application to the SPUD district. The property is located at 2445 Northwest I-44, and as you can see, it is located on the north side of I-44. It is approximately halfway between Pennsylvania and May Avenue. The site is just under one acre, it is presently zoned C3, and the reason for this SPUD application is to request approval to add as an additional permitted use, a non-accessory billboard sign, and that's what we are requesting approval for, to, the C3 use and development regulations would continue to apply with that single additional use. What is proposed is a, what would be a Level 1 EMD billboard, it will be a two-sided V-type sign, and as you all are aware, the Level 1 EMD definition is limited to static display only. The display, each display is required to stay up for a minimum of eight seconds, those are both the regulations under the Oklahoma City Code and also under the Oklahoma Department of Transportation regulations. We're also subject, because we're on the interstate highway, to the regulations of the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. In this area between Pennsylvania and May Avenue, along I-44, there are four existing billboards on the south side, two of which are EMD billboards, and then there is one billboard, one additional billboard on the north side that is near, closer to May Avenue. So, this, if this application is approved, then this would be a second billboard on the north side along I-44. The, next to our property, as you can see from the, from the site plan that is on display, there's a large, concrete-lined drainage channel that from, from top to top, at its widest point is about 70 feet, so we're separated from the residences that are there to the west along Northwest 39th Terrace by that concrete-lined drainage channel, and it does have trees that extend along both sides of it. And we've included in the SPUD a number of restrictions that are intended to minimize any impact from the billboard onto those residences within that area to the west, and I'd just like to outline those, and then we have one additional that we've proposed to the staff, since the staff report was published on Friday, that I'll visit about in a moment, but we have restricted the location of the billboard sign to be not closer than 180 feet from the nearest residence under the Oklahoma City sign ordinance, the minimum separation is 150 feet, so we've increased that to 180 feet. We also have proposed in the SPUD that we will install shields, two-foot-wide shields on both faces of the sign, along the entire north edge of the sign, so that, those are intended and designed to block spillage of light from the sign to the north. We also have included in the SPUD a condition that the billboard will be, the signs will be rotated counterclockwise by a minimum of 10 degrees with relation to Northwest 39th Street or I-44. So, the objective there is, we will have the billboard sign that faces west angled more towards the interstate, and that's already included. And then, once the, when the staff report was, the staff report does recommend approval, but suggests that the commission consider some additional mitigation for the residences there to the west, and so we did some further research in what we have proposed to the staff, and what we are willing to commit to as a part of the SPUD, is to limit the level of illumination that would be permitted from the LED sign beyond the limits that are required presently under the code, both under the Oklahoma City Code and under the ODOT regulations. So, what the, the, these EMD signs, the light measurement, the unit of measurement that is applied, and the way that the restriction is, is applied, is through nits, N-I-T-S, so that's the unit of measurement for these LED billboards. And so, what the city and state regulations require is that, from the time period of dusk to dawn, that the illumination level may not exceed 500 nits. So, that's both the state and the city requirement. So, what we propose for both sides of this billboard is to increase that limit to make, or I guess to decrease the limit maybe would be the appropriate way to say that, we would make the maximum illumination level 300 nits instead of 500 nits. So, that would be a 40% reduction that would be required as part of this SPUD. So, just by way of example, from the research that we did, a typical laptop screen measures between 250 and 350 nits, and the optimal HDR standard for LED TVs, just for comparison, the optimal HDR standard for LED TVs is the ability to display 1,000 nits. So, it just gives you an idea, just for comparison purposes, and that's, you know, in your living room. With this limitation on the maximum illumination level of 300, we're not going to be throwing ambient light into this residential area, and I know that was the concern, the primary concern, as I understood it, from the comment that the staff had made in the staff report. So, we want to be sensitive to that, we're agreeable to do that, the, from what I'm told, if you had a typical billboard with indirect lighting, that there actually would be more ambient light that would be directed into the surrounding area than this EMD LED lighting with this limit on it. So, so, I'm not aware of any protests, we've been monitoring that, at least as of this morning, there hadn't been anybody that had either called or submitted a written protest. We're requesting that you approve it with that additional limitation that we are proposing. We think that it meets the objective of the comment in the TE in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Work. Commissioners, are there any questions relating to the overall rezoning application before we talk about the signs? Anybody have any concerns about the PUD? No? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Work? Okay. I don't have anybody sign up to speak, is there anybody here that would like to speak or be heard on this matter today? If not, there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of SPUD 1134.
Second.
A motion, a second. To approve-
Just a question, sorry, to the chair, do we need all of the things that Mr. Work mentioned?
All the things that he referenced are outlined in the report that I have in front of me, if there's something that's not there, staff can bring to my attention, but, okay.
The one item that is additional to what is presently in the text of the SPUD is this-
The nits, but you're saying you submitted that?
We have submitted-
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we've submitted that language, the amendment to the design statement has not yet been submitted, but we would do that, of course, after this meeting, we would submit a revised SPUD that would include that additional limit of 300 nits from dusk to dawn.
So, we don't need that in our approval? If it's been revised in the, in his application, then I would say we're fine, but we can include the language.
I think we're fine, and I'll just add in the minutes that the applicant offered that, and we've been agreed to it.
So, cool. Motion's good, we had a motion and a second to approve SPUD 1134, please cast your votes. Oh, yeah, would you vote for me? Oh, green, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 21, we can just wait for Janice to get back in. Item 21 is an application by Ken Fitzsimmons of Task Design to rezone 1132 West Britton Road from C3 Community Commercial to SPUD 1141.
Hi, Ken Fitzsimmons, 1228 Northwest 36th Street of Task Design, and one of the owners, Sam Anderson, she's also here, and what we'd like to present to you is a SPUD that's currently zoned C3 in just west, or not too far west of Old Town Britton, and the idea here is to develop something that's a little bit more in line with old Britton, as far as buildings being closer to the street, having parking behind the building, as opposed to, there's some adjacent properties that have parking in the front, things like that, that have kind of, that have diminished the urban feel of the areas, we're trying to bring that back here, and Sam has a company that will actually be one of the tenants in this building, and so the current concept is to have it divided into three spaces, and this is the current concept, as you see in the site plan, to have parking in the back, and that's, I don't know if you have any particular questions, but I did talk to Ms. Powers this morning about some of the language in the SPUD, about potentially removing a couple of the, or a few of the uses that are more intensive, such as gas sales, fast food, and parking garages or surface parking, we're, and we're fine with omitting that. Couple of, oh, go ahead.
We can talk about automated parking garages, automated parking lots, potential use, establishing drive-in, establishing fast food, drive-in, just drive-through or the window, gasoline sales, large, gas engines, large.
Yes, and I think we're, we're fine with that.
I'm sorry, keep going.
Oh, I was just going to say that the only other things that we were going to ask for some adjustments to would be some of the TEs, number one, we're fine with, number two, we would ask to add- Number two, we would ask to add, it's, number two is the alley shall be improved for the length of the property, and we're certainly fine with that if we do develop the parkings as it is in the concept where you access parking from the alley. But we would ask that if the parking lot is accessed strictly from Vincent, for example, that we would not have to develop the full length of the alley. And then, number three, we would ask that, that we are allowed to develop within the side triangle if staff thinks that it does not pose a safety hazard.
So, we, we had talked about this. I've talked to staff about the alley access improvement, and they're okay with it. If they take access from the alley, yes. If not, then not. I didn't, I didn't think to ask them about the side triangle. My thing about side triangles is, you know, we have these situations where we have, in certain places, and there are a lot of them, for some reason, all over the city, where we have way more actual right-of-way than we don't ever use. But when you start trying to match up right-of-way versus property lines and all that kind of stuff, side triangles, I don't have a problem with them reducing the side triangle as long as it's safe, and I have to rely entirely on staff and their expertise to decide that. So, you know, that's where I am on that, to be honest.
I, this is of interest to me, especially on the side triangle question, because I've always been curious if the historical pattern of development is, is ever in line with this. I mean, I would assume that downtown and a lot of our more dense areas, that all of these buildings probably violate the idea of the side triangle. So if we, if we, as a city, which I feel like a lot of times we do, if we want to kind of encourage this type of more urban style of development, I feel like we do need to maybe consider if there's, even if, even if we don't have as much right-of-way as, as we normally hope, that maybe there's a, also a middle ground? Because obviously downtown, I mean, our right-of-way is very slim, and I-
I agree that this is, and it's one of the things that we're going to have to deal with, but, you know, the, this, that's very much a give and take. We want to move buildings up to the street and put parking behind, but, you know, you move, the, the difference between downtown and every place else is that traffic's just not moving that fast down here. You know, traffic's whizzing down Britton Road, but it's not, you know, whizzing down Harvey.
Sure.
Most of the time.
Sure. Absolutely. I mean, otherwise, I'm, it looks like a good debate.
So is there, is there a way we can make some allowance for the side triangle as long as it's safe? What are, what are we going to do about that?
Public Works approves it.
Yeah, if, if we leave it to Public Works for their approval, is that sufficient?
I, I would ask if there's any chance Public Works would approve that, because I feel like normally, wouldn't they?
They do sometimes. I mean, I've-
It's tied to a variance, isn't it? Every time we've ever tried to put anything in a site triangle, we've had to go in front of the variance board to get it done. Neighborhood entryway signs on little short brick fences or-
Well, that's one of the advantages of doing an S P U D., though, is that you can-
Do not have to.
Yeah, you can do that through this mechanism. I'm just not sure that we have all the technical information we need to make a decision about it right this minute.
For one thing, I think it would be incumbent upon the applicant to show either by photographs or visually somehow that it's not going to create a traffic site obstruction. Side triangle is also utilized for places for the city to put traffic control devices, signage, and that sort of thing. So we'd have to leave that part up to Public Works. In areas such as this, and like you said, downtown, encroachment of the side triangle is fairly common in older historic commercial areas. But we need to leave it up to Public Works and then for the applicant to show that it will not create some kind of dangerous side obstruction.
Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I think so, and, or, I, I think we're both comfortable with that. Sam, would you agree? One thing to note is that the building just to the east of this is actually, it appears to be just up to the property line. And so, again, we're just trying to bring back that-
That's what I was going to ask, is there's a building labeled Sign Company on the, that looks like it is right on the corner.
It is, it is. And, and our hope is, is that as this area continues to be revitalized, that, that urban presence and maybe streets will be slowed down, you know, there'll be measures taken where it is more, more akin to what's going on in downtown and uptown and areas like that, and, and not be a, you know, a highway.
I, I look forward to hearing how it goes with Public Works. I hope you guys win that battle, and I'd love to kind of understand better how we have those conversations in the future.
What did we decide on the language for T E. 2? You said-
We would just ask that a, maybe, I mean, I think the first part's fine, but could we add something that says that if, if we don't access parking from the alley or use the alley for our property, that we would not have to improve it? So I don't know what the exact language is, but maybe it's, "The alley shall be improved for length of property if, if it is-"
If access is taken?
Right, something to that effect.
That's, that's what I was thinking, that, you know, the alley will be improved the length of property if park, if access is taken from the alley. But if it's taken just from Vincent alone, then not. Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item today? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'm, I didn't take notes on this, so I'm not sure. You guys might have to correct me on any additional language you put on these T E.'s, but I make a motion to recommend approval.
Subject to-
There we go.
The amendment of T E. 2 to say that the alley shall be improved for the length of the property if access is taken from the alley, and amending T E. 3 to say the side triangle shall be maintained under the discretion of the Public Works Director? That sounds really loose.
How about if we say, how about if we say that the side triangle may be reduced, subject to approval of, of the Public Works Director?
Right. If, if I may, I guess where I was, what I was thinking is, doesn't it allow in the U D.C. that there is some provision or language in there that side triangles can be reduced or omitted? And it does say something about that up to the discretion? That's what I was looking for.
So we'll find that language?
Yeah.
And T E., the T E.'s 1 and 2 and 4 were accepted, correct?
Right, we're, we're fine with that.
Okay.
Yes, and, and deleting uses, automotive parking garages, automotive parking lot as a principal use, eating establishments drive-in, eating establishments fast food with drive-through window, gasoline sales large, and gasoline sales small restricted. Go ahead, here, second. A motion, second, to approve item number 21 as amended. Cast your votes, please. My, my light's not working. Why's, oh, there, there you go, okay. It is approved.
Thank you.
Item number 22, application by the City of Oklahoma City for a special permit to construct an emergency communications radio tower in the A.A. District at 1420 Hogback Road.
You've been sitting a very long time. Would you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. Kerry Wagner for the city. My address is 420 West Main. And of course, we're, we're here on, based on the continuance that we had, there were some questions that were asked at the last meeting. I didn't have the expertise to answer those questions. It was continued, that we've had Public Works continue to work on those concerns. It is a public works managed construction project. Mr. Jim Rowland is here on behalf of Public Works to answer any questions that you two might have about the use and the possibilities on that project. Okay?
Okay.
Jim?
Tell us, tell us just real quickly, sort of, what it is we're doing.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity to do that. We're in the, we're in the process of replacing our public safety communications system, which is a radio system that our police and fire departments and other departments within the city and other external entities also utilize for emergency communications. As a part of that, we received feedback from the police and fire department that the far northeastern portion of Oklahoma City was a difficult area for them, especially when they're in homes with, with handhelds and inside structures. And so, in the development of the new system and the design of the new system, we're reusing all of our existing towers throughout the Oklahoma City area and adding a single tower in the far northeastern portion of the city at Fire Station Number 4.
Thank you. Come and tell us a little something about why this place is the place you need to be.
Well, I think Kerry addressed it as far as the I T. and the radio service. Right now, if we put it on the north end of the building, it gives us a short run for our electrical service. Fuel trucks can service it from the existing drive and maintenance vehicles also. I think at the last meeting, there was some discussion about why we couldn't move it to the far southeast corner of the property. There's several concerns that bring about that. One is, to get FCC and FAA approval, we had to go through a lengthy process. We had to get that site reviewed by the Historical Preservation Office, the State Archaeological Society, all the different tribes. We had to do a NEPA, and then, like I said, there was FAA and FCC approval. If we move this site more than 100 feet, we have to go through that whole process again, which would be about a 10-month delay on the project. Moving it to that site, also, there's a grade separation. The, the current site is at about 1112. The site that they were proposing is about 1080, so it's about a 30-foot, 30-foot lower elevation. So we would have to increase the tower height by another 30 feet, which would be a additional cost. The other issue is, we have a lot longer runs for all our connectivity to the building, which would increase the cost. And then, as I mentioned, on the current site, we could service the equipment from the existing driveway. If we moved to the southeast corner, we would have to construct a driveway that would go basically a long way around the site. It would have to go from the fire trucks lane around the northeast corner of the site, and then all the way around to that southeast side. And it would have to be a heavy enough road to be able to service fuel trucks and maintenance equipment for the generator and the other equipment on the side. So, I mean, to relocate it would be a significant delay. There'd be a lot of additional costs. And really, I think we have some other sites down there. You know, there was concerns about the view from the resident to the north. There's a utility substation just to the north. There's currently towers all over that site. You know, we currently have one radio tower there already. You know, it'd be a substantial cost, and we'd be relocating the tower maybe another 200 feet away, which I don't really think is going to affect, it's not going to be a significant improvement to the site. If you go back up just a little, or back down just a little bit, there's, that would be the site we'd have to relocate it to. And as you can see, to the north, there's already a lot of high voltage transmission lines and, and other towers connected to the substation along with a cell tower.
Do you have any questions for?
I believe one of the other concerns that was raised was concerning lightning. They thought it would attract more lightning.
There were both safety and aesthetic concerns expressed.
Yes. I think in our report, we contacted the same individual that, that she had for her report, and the study he had done before was for towers that were like 400 meters and above. He hadn't actually looked at towers about 250 feet. He went through and looked at our existing towers that we have around the city, and the incident of lightning strikes in that area before and after the installation of the tower. And, I mean, it says in the report, in his words, "There was no significant increase in the, the intensity of the lightning strikes in that area."
I'm astonished that there's all this information available, that you could just go look that up, you know, how many lightning strikes before and after a tower was installed.
When we contacted him, he actually did a, a pretty thorough study of all the current towers we have, and provided that research, which we submitted here.
Okay. I do have people who are signed up to speak.
Could I, could I ask one question?
Yes, do, please.
Do that, because I'm certain that this issue is going to come back to how much of a change in the current proposed placement. It's going to be about that, I'm certain. So, based on the grade, let me, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Based on the grade change from where it currently is proposed to be built-
Yes.
-you can't move to this preferred southwest location on the lot, correct?
No, we can move there.
You can move there.
There's additional cost, and it would be-
And it would put it in the way.
Probably an 10 to 12-month delay on the project. Yeah.
And the tower will have to be extended, so it would be even taller.
It's going to be 30-foot taller. And we're currently, I think it's 312 feet from her residence now. You know, if we move it to that site, you'd be gaining maybe 200 feet. But this is a 250-foot tall tower. I don't think aesthetically, there's going to be a, a significant difference in the appearance, you know, going from one location to the other.
And so, did I, did I hear you right, that you could have a change up to 100 feet without having to go back through those regulations? So suppose that she was, that it would satisfy neighbors to move it 100 feet? Have you all contemplated that, or what, what would that look like?
I believe this drawing right here shows the intended site there at the, where that kind of red dot is. And we looked at moving it a little bit farther to the south. And like I said, I, that keeps us within the 100 feet, but appearance-wise or aesthetically, I don't think it's going to make a-
And distance from-
Significant difference in the appearance for her residence.
And the home is really not any different, is it?
Yeah. So it's just a matter of which sightline it interferes with?
I mean, if you, if we move it, that drawing doesn't quite go far south enough, but if you move it to the south, we're increasing the height to compensate for that. And so, the sightline from her house, I mean, it's going to be a slightly different angle, but you're still going to have pretty much the same height tower and-
So even, even at this cha, at, at this remove of 100 feet here, as shown by the red and blue dots, there's a change in grade?
Yes. We'd have to do some site work there to level it. I think in the very back of the packet, we have a grading plan, and if you look at that, you can kind of see how that area falls off. Then behind the site, when we built the fire station, that was actually one of my projects. We had to build up the back of the site a lot. So when you get to the back edge of that parking lot, it drops off real steep, steeply until you get down to the, the original grade. And even that grade falls off to the south and east, which I said, you know, if we, if we were to relocate it, we'd have to do a lot of site work down there just to get a level site to put it on, besides having to build a road all the way around the facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorinda McCullough, did I say that right? Do you give us your name and address for the record, please?
It's Dorinda McCullough, 1114300 Hogback Road, Luther, Oklahoma. I have some questions. I put on there information that I'd sent you guys about when the gentleman had spoken before that they had looked at another site, but due to the elevation, is that correct? That you did not do it?
Here, direct your comments to us.
Okay, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Due to the elevation, that they couldn't build it somewhere else, was that correct?
The other location on this site is what we were talking about.
Uh-uh. The other, was there not, did they not propose, did you not ask them, was there ever any other site proposed?
I do think we talked about that.
Yes. And I believe, and I cannot, I'm, I hope I'm correct, that, yeah, you had said something about the Jones Water Treatment Plant.
Let's, let's just ask them.
Please.
Would you, would you come answer this question for us, please? Would you come answer this question for us, please? When you were here before, we did talk about whether there was some other completely different location where the tower could go.
Yeah, one of the things that I said at our last meeting was that when we were originally looking at the sites, we contemplated the potential of putting it at an Oklahoma City wastewater treatment plant on the sound of the Canadian. And there is elevation between, there's a ridge and everything that made that path not available to us unless that tower was extended up in the 300 to 350 foot.
Okay. Thank you.
Question again, was that located in Jones?
I, is it Jones?
Is that the, is that the water treatment plant there? The reason I'm asking is that I have provided some other information, which was stating that the elevation, according to Google Earth, is the same. Is that correct? And I don't
Well, even though he's, I don't think, I don't want to put words out, but what I understood is, it wasn't the elevation at the site. It says there's elevation between the two sites that presented issues with the radio.
Taller than 250 foot between my house and there, or that property and there?
I think what they were saying is that if they placed it someplace else, the tower would have to be much taller.
Okay. Well, okay.
And odds are good that if they placed it somewhere else, there'd just be someone else standing there instead of you, right, that would be upset about it being within a visible shot of their home. I mean, this
I'm so sorry. If it's the location which I believe that he's speaking of, there's a lot of farmland all around it.
I think, I think what they've told us is that it is not a viable location for them, so.
Okay. Well, I still feel that this is not, that there is going to be danger from this. And my question to you is, this tower is built, and my house has struck repeatedly. What happens? Do I just get to have, you know, my insurance increase? Do I have to be solely responsible for something that was placed there?
I don't know how to answer that question.
Well, as in
The information provided us indicates that it will not increase lightning strikes.
But I did provide a lot of information that said contradictory, contradicting that statement. And I also provided one that was a statement, and it was from a study done from Stanford University, with an excess of 60 meters, which is 196 foot. And this tower is 250 foot. That it increases the lightning strikes. It attracts lightning. The towers and tall buildings are the rare exception to the rule of lightning generally not being drawn or attracted.
Would relocating this tower to the southeast corner, I guess it is, of the property, is that going to alleviate that concern of yours?
I don't know that it is. I mean, as far as, my question to all of you, if you had read all this, if you've read through all the information, would you feel safe with a tower that close to your home? Would any of you feel safe? With the people that are wanting to construct this? If I said, "I'm going to put this right by your home," how do you feel about that? Are you going to guarantee that this is not going to occur, lightning strikes?
I don't know how close they are. I have, where I office, there are enormous towers directly across the street from us, all around us. I'm at Britton and Kelly again. I don't know what the distances are, but I'm there more than I'm at my home. I've never once thought about that. I'm just being honest, I haven't. Whether I'm at a greater risk or likelihood that my building that I'm in is going to get struck by lightning because there's towers there, I don't know the answer to that. What I think, sorry to jump out on a limb, but I think what I heard last time, and I thought about it after the meeting, I did, I looked back at the maps. There was actually a technical report that somehow I didn't even realize had been included in our packets. I went back and looked at that. And there are instances where, at least I feel like up here, we have to balance things between safety and the necessity of our fire and emergency personnel to be able to communicate between a neighborhood who doesn't want a connection and a neighborhood that does, or a, you know, a staff member that does. There are all these balances that we have to make. And I think ultimately what we're faced here is that, are we going to refuse to put this tower on this site anywhere? I don't think moving it and forcing a year's worth of delays is going to change your opinion of the site. So I think for us, it's just a simple question. If we balance those two things, right, the risks that, and I'm not, I'm not saying that there's not a risk, or that I don't sympathize or empathize with that risk that you feel. I'm saying that we're sitting up here, and we're just forced to make a decision and balance those two things. And that's what, it's really hard. It's not a position that any of us want to be in, or that we make lightly, or that we make without being conscientious of your feelings about the matter. At the end of the day, we have to make a decision. And so for me, it's just a matter of balancing those two things. What I hear is that they did consider other sites. They looked at it. They looked at the surrounding area. They determined that this is it. They don't have any incentive to put this here versus anywhere else. There's no incentive for them to do that, except that it's practical, it expands the network, and it does exactly what they're seeking to do, which is to provide emergency services, reliable communications in an emergency, which is a very important public service. So for me, it balances on the side of deferring to them, and that's where I am on this. I don't like it. I wish that they didn't need this tower, but I'm not in a position to offer an alternative solution to reduce how I balance those two issues. And I'm sorry that you feel that it's something that we're taking lightly, because it's not. I thought about this a lot after, I mean, I've had two weeks to sort of think about this. And you made a comment last time about, you know, how would you feel if this were next to your home? And I actually thought about where I work. I never, I can't think about it because I don't have one up by my house, okay, admittedly. But I have a whole plethora of towers to choose from out the front door of my office. I've never thought about it. So it's a tough position, I'm sorry, but that's at least where I am on the issue, so.
My office is at the base of a 660-foot-tall radio tower. I can stick my arm out the window and touch that tower. And I'm 50 yards from a 670-foot radio tower. And I've been there 40 years, and I've never been struck by lightning. Now, ice is an issue. Ice falling off of a tall tower is an issue. But our towers have cellphone antennas hanging out and guyline wires that come down that the ice forms on. And I'm assuming this is a freestanding tower. This doesn't have guyline wires running out from it. So I tend to, I feel your pain, but I tend to be with Commissioner Cravens on this deal, and the fact that it kind of is what it is, and the city has done their due diligence on this, and nothing else works.
As far as that you would never consider placing it in an open field, considering there's thousands of acres around us that has nothing on there but dirt?
Well, unfortunately, I think we have to place it on land we own.
Yes.
So, you know, I, I do understand that this is difficult for you. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that you've come down here twice to share with us the information you have. I think we've pressed them about the due diligence that they've done. It sounds to me like they have done their due diligence. I just don't know that there are any good choices here in terms of, you know, how it's going to affect your situation.
If I thought, just so you understand, if I thought that moving this tower would dramatically improve the circumstances there, I would not feel the way that I do. But it won't. By your own admission, it won't. And so to make them move it here or there, you know, within the site, it doesn't merit the cost and the delay. It doesn't balance in favor of that, for those reasons.
I understand that. I mean, when we spoke before, I had done some of this research, but I did even more so. And the more that I saw the possibilities of my home being struck, or anything, my trees, my property in general. Did you guys go out there and really look at how small of an area that is? Did you all drive out there? It's small. And it's really close to my property. I mean, I guess, looking at that size of a tower sitting right next to my property, and the possibilities of this, all this lightning, what if it does start striking my home? I did list some other information about a lady who, a tower was erected, it was 138 foot, and she was struck five times. Now, you also have to think, when you are in the city, and you talk about these towers where the radio stations are, there are multiple towers that they can bounce off from one to the other. We are the only thing there. That is a magnitude of 250 foot. There is nothing else to bounce it off of, except us.
Did you have anything else you wanted to share with us?
I guess not. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Am I correct that this is an advisory recommendation, this goes to City Council, correct?
Oh, yes.
That's what I thought.
Commissioners, is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this item? If not, I'll take a motion.
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion to recommend approval to City Council on SP 535.
Second.
And a motion is second to approve item number 22. Would you cast your votes, please? It's approved. I didn't realize we'd lost Commissioner Highsmith. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much.
Item 23 is a recommendation on a proposed ordinance to Chapter 59, amending the Bricktown, Downtown, Stockyard City, Scenic River overlay, Stockyard City Transitional and Urban Design Districts relating to small wireless facilities.
Hello, Lisa Cronister with the Planning Department. I presented this at the introduction at your July meeting. I don't know if you want me to go through the presentation again?
Let's ask. Do we feel the need to hear this presentation again? I know I don't, but I'm, I don't think so.
I'm glad it was so riveting the last time.
It's just
I think our takeaway from beating is, if there were things we wanted to do, we can't do them anyway, so it's
So we're asking for a recommendation of approval to City Council.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners?
So moved.
Is there anybody else here who wants to be heard on the riveting subject of proposed ordinances to the Bricktown, Downtown, Stockyard City, Scenic River, Stockyard City Transition and Urban Design Districts relating to small wireless facilities?
Pop quiz on what a small wireless facility is.
No? Okay. Now, I'll take a motion.
Move for recommendation of approval.
Second.
And a motion is second to approve item number 23. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved.
And item number 24 is a related item that would update the historical preservation guidelines to also address small wireless facilities.
Similarly, I assume there's nobody else here who wants to be heard on this item, so I'll take a motion.
I move approval of item 24.
Second.
And a motion is second to approve item number 24. Would you cast your votes, please? It is approved. And item number 25, I guess, has become moot. Should we continue it, since we're going to hear the item at our next UDC meeting? So I'll take a motion to continue it, two weeks, or until our next
Move to continue.
Second.
Motion is second to continue item number 25. Cast your votes, please. It's Commissioner Kinkoff, Commissioner Pennington. Okay. It's continued. Quickly here, now that we're at the end, we're raising to the finish. Items 26 through 33 were continued. Additional items, communications and reports, planning commission committees, planning commission members, anybody? I have to say, the, I've been, I've been very interested in listening to the discussions at City Council about the MAPS four proposals. If any of you have not done that, you might bail yourself of the opportunity of doing it on YouTube, who knew? Probably everybody but me. They're really very, very interesting, and I think as we move forward with various components of it, it will be helpful to have that background and to, it's just always very informative to hear regular citizens talk about what's important to them and why. So, we are, our consultants were here recently, shall I let you do that part about the code update? Do that. Okay. And then we had our presentation last week from the consultants on the Innovation District. That also was a very difficult, interesting process. The presentation that you really want to listen to is the one that was given at the fourth City Council meeting for the MAPS component of it. It was so much better than the consultant-driven presentations. I sat through four of those. But the presentation that was given at the MAPS discussion before City Council is by far the best summary of what we really hope to get out of that consultation process, which is, you know, a land use plan that's going to help us make good decisions about integrating those components, you know, into the community in a thoughtful way, and leveraging development around the Innovation District in a thoughtful way. So, so, there's that. Planning Department?
Can I just, very quickly
Yes, do, do. Yes, yes.
To watch out for. One, in light of the recent tragedies that have been going on in Ohio and Texas, I hope that we are, as a city, considering the different ways that we are working on, and I know this is not directly development-related, but it's on my mind, as we're thinking about how this impacts just generally, people's general feeling of safety. I know that my mom texted me and said, "I don't feel comfortable going to the Scissor Tail Park opening because of the possibility of active shooters," and this whole idea.
Oh, little careful thoughts.
You know, whether you actually feel that way or not, it is still a real concern. And I think as a city, we should be aware of the people who genuinely have that feeling of fear, and how we can still encourage people to feel safe in this city and in others. So one thing for us to keep in mind, I don't have a solution to that, but I know that that's something that we should be aware of. The other thing is, if you have not heard about, you've heard me talk about before, the issue of the food desert that exists in northeast Oklahoma City. And that situation has only become worse as a result of the decision by the owners of our only remaining grocery store to close. They have not been clear about the reasons behind that closure, so I have no idea. Nor was there any sufficient one-week's notice. So thanks to the leadership of our mayor, our council, particularly our councilwoman, Nikki Nice, they have at least been able to bus people from northeast Oklahoma City to northwest Oklahoma City so that they have an opportunity to go to the grocery store. But this is a very serious issue. It's a land use issue because there will now be useless acres that are going to be in a hot spot in northeast Oklahoma City. So we do need to do what we can to address that, and I just wanted us all to be aware of that, so, thanks.
I'm not trying to be contrari, but I was there today. There is a full-service grocery store eight blocks away to the south.
Yes. And so Otwell's is there, but Otwell's is really, really small compared to what was there.
Sure, but the food desert, last remaining grocery store being closed is, there were two grocery stores within eight blocks of each other. None of us have that same liberty. I don't have two grocery stores eight blocks from each other at my house. And I'm, once again, I'm a huge fan of northeast Oklahoma City, but the narrative that is going out is incorrect, because there's a full-service meat counter, all the vegetables you could want. I mean, it's a, it's an IGA that's in Shawnee, is what Otwell's is. It's not a Dollar General that just has some boxed foods. It's a full-blown, functioning, servicing grocery store with a butcher and everything, so.
But, and I agree, so forgive me then if I overstated it, but capacity is still a problem.
Sure.
Capacity is still going to be the issue, because that grocery store is significantly smaller than the one that was, that was smaller than the one that was, that was there. So in my opinion, it doesn't adequately meet the needs of the community if I have to go wait in line for an hour in order to get those items. But I respect your, what you're saying, because you're right. There is an ability to get to those items, but it is impacted by the fact that it doesn't adequately meet, its capacity doesn't adequately meet the need.
And I can appreciate that. It's just, it seems to me that the news media is stirring up a narrative that isn't completely true, which the news media does, because if it bleeds, it bleeds. So the hottest, heaviest story that day was, and understandably, and, but we can't blame the city for that. It's the Binkowskis, and I don't want to throw them under the bus, but the city has actively worked with them for years trying to get something developed there, so we can't be mad at anybody but the property owner there.
I completely agree with you about that. And the city has been helpful in trying to mitigate the problem even now. So I definitely agree with that, that it's something that's a problem with the property owner, for sure.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to exclude anybody else. Anybody else? So Planning Department?
An update on the code. So as Janice mentioned in an earlier meeting, the code consultants have been to town just for kind of a preliminary data gathering, information gathering session, I guess. So they were here, they did a lot of touring and kind of had a site direct, or staff-directed tour of the city to look at just really good examples of maybe issues that we have with the zoning. Take them to particular sites and look at, and kind of tell stories, that kind of thing. They did have some interviews with, with staff just to kind of get them up to speed. The next steps will be to have the official kickoff. So they're going to put together a draft stakeholder and community engagement plan. Also, they'll start working on the plan to get this big four-year project done and they'll get back to us. And so as we hear more information about that, we'll be getting that to you. And we expect that we'll have some volunteers from the Planning Commission that will be interested in helping that process. And we'll get you the details on how that will look and get your input on that coming soon.
Thank you. I threw away my sheet. Development Services, I can't read, Public, I don't can't remember who's next, but nobody else is here. I'll take a motion to adjourn. On favor, say aye. Any opposed?